The voting action by the board was a five to zero vote to have the project go back to the planning commission. That is incorrect. Actually, I'm asking for those minutes to be amended to reflect the fact that Ms. Annie Kupka had requested to be recused from the vote. And I would like to read her statement again as captured in the minutes or the transcript. Madam Chair, in an abundance of caution and in order to avoid any impropriety and appearance of impropriety, I am recusing myself for participation in this public hearing and all related matters including discussion and voting. This conflict arises as a result of having received and properly reported in-kind campaign contributions from the applicant today and going forward. So we wanted to amend the minutes for the board to vote on to reflect the fact that the vote was made at a motion by Mr. Granger, seconded by Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Kupka read a statement to recuse herself from discussion and vote on the matter and the vote is four to zero.
Thank you, Dr. Young. We'll bring that up with the correction at the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote on that amendments agenda? Sorry, forgot about that one. You haven't done those in a while. Do I have a motion to accept the amendments to the agenda?
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at that time of the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who would like to come up and give public comment but not on any topics that are going to be heard in the public hearing? Do we have anybody online? Do you have somebody online? Mr. Dines, would you like to bring that person up?
Sure. Mrs. Carabots, do you have something you'd like to say for the regular meeting and not for a specific public meeting?
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Barbara Carabots and I'm currently residing at 3337 Roseland Road. I'm speaking tonight as a concerned citizen whose waiver home is now sandwiched between state properties known as Wayside Park. Our family life, privacy, and safety is now compromised by park visitors trespassing from both sides of our home. So far this summer, we've had to chase many intruders off our beach and pier, including two separate calls that required assistance from the Sheriff's Department. We'd like to thank Supervisors Jeff Stonehill and Annie Kupka for initiating visits to our home to discuss our situation and personally investigate the future use of the acquired site located at 3321 Roseland Road. My husband extended an invitation last year to the King George Supervisor Team, but he did not receive a response. We would like to once again extend this offer. Many interested parties seem to agree that the two-acre site at 3321 Roseland proposed as a replacement for Wayside Park has severe limitations. It is unfortunate that $780,000 was spent on an initiative. Many will argue it's okay because the purchased property was not made using county money. However, money given to Virginia from Maryland should still be considered public dollars, and future state and local dollars will be needed for renovations and maintenance of this site. Why put additional money into an inadequate project when our county and state are under huge financial constraints? We understand the desire and expectation that the county provide water access to our citizens. Our question is what other plans are being considered? Can we improve our old existing park? One interested town resident suggested a portion of the old Nice Bridge be used as a fishing pier and community gathering place. Could we situate swimming and picnicking areas under the bridge similar to other parks who have successfully accomplished the setup? How about adding some jetties to fill up sandy beaches and provide a safe border preventing patrons from trespassing onto private properties? As to what happens to the 3321 Roseland Road property, could it be used in a way to support public safety and social distancing? Can the location be used to enhance our community, perhaps utilized for schools, meetings, training, or other county office needs? More than ever, we must make smarter decisions on all publicly funded matters. Thank you for listening to our concerns and understanding the current fear we have for our safety and privacy. We truly appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Ms. Carabots. Is there anybody else online, Mr. Dines? Do we have any written correspondence? Or, Mr., go ahead.
My name is Adam Simonoff, 5340 Gordon Drive, King George, Virginia. I have five questions. Number one, Dogan Wayside Park and Barnesfield Park, both on US 301 South, are only accessible to the majority of King George County residents by driving on US 301 North and making a left turn or a U-turn onto US 301 South just before the Governor and his memorial Senator Thomas Mack Middleton Bridge, also known as the Potomac River Bridge. There is no traffic control to stop or go around continuing oncoming traffic from the Potomac River Bridge. Since Maryland and Virginia entered into an agreement to modify Virginia US 301 to meet the upgrade of Potomac River Bridge, I asked officials from the county, state, and federal levels to consider an engineering change proposal to wear traffic controls to improve road safety before new road construction begins. Please provide the community with status updates so county park visitors do not have to risk accidents from oncoming bridge traffic approaching at highway speeds. Number two, Dogan Wayside provided a small public beach and community picnic area. Before the county surrendered the park for Maryland's Potomac River Bridge improvement, when did King George residents have an opportunity to vote on a referendum to give up our beach? No referendum was held. Why not? Number three, who approached our congressman and the US Navy to surrender their unused land for the Potomac River Bridge expansion to save our Dogan Wayside Beach? Four, given the new land acquisition, what is the plan to replace the lost beach with a man-made beach at the new Dogan Wayside location? And finally, number five, before the COVID-19 pandemic, King George was losing retail stores. What is the county's plan to incentivize retail store landlords who keep their tenants? What is the county's plan to attract new small business startups and incentivize businesses owned by veterans, women, and minorities? Thank you very much for the opportunity to present my questions to the board today.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Grego, 13401 Prim Road, King George, Virginia. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I stand before you to encourage you to support the grant to bring broadband to the many last mile customers here in King George County, of which myself and my family are considered such. My wife and I moved here with our family here in 2016, and we never thought to think about if internet would be an issue. We managed up until March of this year when the COVID-19 pandemic became a worldwide issue, and it really hit home then how hard it is to survive in 2020 in this new age without wired-in broadband access. I have a five-year-old who is going to be going into first grade. My wife and I basically did what we could with the packets starting in March, which was very little without having an elementary school teacher education, and he could not access on a hotspot the many online virtual activities provided by the local school district here. Myself, I am a teacher for Charles County Public Schools in Maryland. Today, we were told that we would be going online virtual to start the school year. In order to upload lessons, to participate in the many lessons, to bring engaging curriculum to my students, I need to go sit in my church parking lot at Round Hill Baptist Church to access their Wi-Fi in order to do my job successfully in order to telework. That, to me, is not right. My wife, who is a nurse here for Fresenius Medical Care, has a dream of going back to school to get her master's degree in public health. She wants to do an online program through Liberty University. As of right now, she cannot do that. I have exhausted all measures and means to bring broadband for my family, not only for me, but for the many people here in King George that do not have access to it. I have contacted corporate headquarters directly at Atlantic Broadband. They quoted me $50,000 to bring internet from Round Hill Road to my house at Prim Road on a teacher's salary, as I'm sure that you know. I can't afford that. So I am asking you tonight to please thoughtfully consider this grant and vote in support of this grant that will not only benefit me, but my son's ability to continue to learn at a higher level, my ability to reach children as well in their learning experience, and also my wife's dream of achieving public health, and not only for my family, but for the many families here in King George that need access to broadband, wired and internet to be successful here moving forward in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in the audience who would like to speak? Do we have any written correspondence?
Madam Chair, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
I have two emails I received from constituents who requested that they be read aloud. First one, hello, my name is Kimberly Seakley, and I have been a resident of King George County for almost four years. We moved into the Meadows Community to a lovely home on 11 acres. The only downside to living in this great community is the lack of internet access. We are located in a lower valley of the neighborhood and have no options available to us other than hotspot Wi-Fi with capped data limits. Even with our hotspot, our upload and download speed is ridiculously slow and the signal is weak. During this COVID crisis, I decided to change careers and attend school for nursing. Trying to manage online courses has been an absolute nightmare. I have had to take my laptop to the library in order to take my exams. I can only imagine parents who were attempting distance learning with their children. My husband had an opportunity to take a job that would allow him to work from home. Unfortunately, speed testing for our download and upload speed showed such unreliability that he had to turn down the position. With elderly patients at home, it would have been a perfect job for him to transition to. We are in dire need of a solution. The lack of ability to pay bills online, download information, schoolwork, communicate with family through Zoom, or any other task involving internet accessibility is sad and unacceptable in this age of technology. Please help us rural residents. Thank you. Kim Seakley, 3846 Dockside Court. And the second correspondence, before I read it, I do need to read something in advance. I will read a redacted version of the letter, removing only the names of the author's suggested broadband entities that are both acceptable and unacceptable, as they do not add or take away from the meaning of the letter, and so as not to affect any procurement processes or unnecessarily cause harm or benefit to any provider. Dear Board of Supervisors, it's imperative that all residents of King George have access to high-speed internet from their homes. I was shocked to learn that many folks have to use the Smoot Library or hotspots in order to download files, work on projects, or simply browse the internet. That's unacceptable, and I'm not sure how or why we are even still operating this way. King George needs to get with the times. I'm fortunate that I live in a neighborhood that has access to Verizon internet, but I find it highly disappointing that in 2020, folks in our county do not have easy access to high-speed internet. High-speed internet is not luxury. It's a necessity and should be brought to our county as soon as possible. When I speak of high-speed internet, I'm talking about, here are named two large companies that the author feels are acceptable, not, here are named two smaller companies that the author feels are not acceptable, or other small companies that are less than optimal. High-speed internet is not a want, it's a need. Give the residents of King George what they've needed for many years and do it in an expeditious manner. Thank you. Christine Fauchet, 6194 McCarthy Drive. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. Does anybody else have any written correspondence? I have one written correspondence, but I will add it in my board report. Thank you, everyone. Right now, one second. I will close public comment and move on to reports from members of the board. Mr. Stonehill.
Good evening, everybody. And if Mrs. Carabots is still on the line, thanks for calling in, and we will continue to do what we can for you guys down there, for all the residents down in Roseland. So we'll keep working on that best we can. Mr. Simonoff, thanks for all your emails. They do get to all of us. And you were talking about, you know, the county giving up the beach down there at Wayside. They didn't really give it up. It was kind of taken, you know. The, in one of the town halls, it was, this whole project was kind of like rammed down our throats for the county. And so it wasn't like the county gave up anything. It was, like I said, it was taken. So we're doing what we can to get, you know, land back and get access to the public because, you know, during the times of COVID and everything, everybody wants to be outside, everybody wants to fish, everybody wants to be in the, you know, outside, out of their houses. And about the lease and the rent and stuff and all the stores, that is definitely something that's near and dear to my heart since I'm the supervisor in Daugr and the Business District, and I'm watching, you know, retail stores close up one right after another because their rent is going up. I know economic development, I've spoken to Mr. Miner over there about different ideas about how we can, you know, stop that if there's any way that we can. And trust me, I'm with you all the way on that, you know, whatever we can do, you know, if there's a way that they need to fine, you know, landlords because of raising the rent, I don't know. So, and it's definitely something that we're going to be working on, so don't worry about that. Mr. Brago, I hope I'm getting that name, that name right. Broadband, yes, is definitely a major concern for all of King George County since we are such a rural county. It was bad before, and now during the times of COVID, it really hits home for, you know, the, the lack of the broadband that we do have here. Until I moved over here to King George, I was in an area that I had to use a hotspot, and I couldn't do anything except check emails. I couldn't stream, I couldn't do anything. So I know exactly what you're talking about. There are some things in motion right now to increase the broadband access on a countywide level, statewide, and a federal level. Congressman Whitman is always continuously sending out things about what he wants to do to try to get rural broadband to all the rest of the county. So that's definitely something we're going to be working on. Quick board report. July 2nd, I sat in on a meeting with a group of folks in reference to the cigarette taxing for next year. On the 2nd also, I attended the LEPC meeting and discussed with other agencies and folks from around the state of what's going on in their counties, and also, of course, combating COVID. July 4th, we had an informal meeting with the folks from Hope Church up on their property off of Matthias Point Road where we met with, we probably had about a half a dozen of the neighbors that were right around that area, and they gave just a, you know, a quick briefing about, you know, their plans and everything, and to show us the property a little bit. July 9th, myself and Mrs. Kupka held a very informal town hall meeting outside at Barnesfield Park under the pavilion, and again, met with all the folks from Hope Church and their attorneys, and left that open for basically everybody in King George to come talk to them, and also the neighbors on the Matthias Point area. It was very interesting to, to see their plans and to talk to their different members. And then yesterday, July 13th, I attended a quarterly meeting at the Sheriff's Office that Sheriff Giles put on, and spoke to those guys, had a nice presentation from Mr. Coleman, who gave them a beautiful flag to hang up at the office. And July 6th, I've actually, I spoke with the Director of the Potomac River Fisheries Commission and discussed how COVID was affecting the commercial fishing industry in the Potomac River, and especially the folks here in King George, our commercial watermen, and also how it affected businesses all up and down the Potomac Marinas and tackle shops and everything. Also spoke about the Mallow's Bay Sanctuary, which is just a little bit north of us, but the southern boundary up there does touch King George. And we also spoke about what to do with some of the bridge material from when they do the 301 Bridge, and there might be a possibility that we can keep some of that here locally in the county, or not in the county, but on the Potomac River outside of the county for some artificial reefs, so the folks here in King George can get out to mess with that. And then we also spoke about other things that were going on with the bridge and how it's going to affect King George and the Potomac. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Kupka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to read my entire report, but I did want to point out a few highlights, and I will, as I always do, publish it on social media. On June 25th, virtually attended the YMCA Board of Directors meeting. They are working to reschedule their golf tournament and their casino night. They noted that they will not be able to do in-person shopping at Walmart with the children for bright beginnings this year due to the current store policy. However, there are still plans to move forward with the backpack and school supply donation drive. They are concerned that donations will be down as usage is down. I informed them that as the Y is a King George Education Foundation partner in education, there may be an opportunity to receive backpacks and school supplies from Fox Smart Center, and that I would ask the KGEF Board to consider it at their upcoming meeting. KGEF agreed to do so, and I put them in touch with the Y to support the backpack drive. Thank you to King George Education Foundation for continuing to pay forward your mission, uniting the community to enhance public education despite the uncertainty of the times we face. Saturday, June 27th, I attended the Fairview Beach Town Hall. I want to thank Mr. Bush, James Monroe District Supervisor, for hosting the town hall and inviting me, and Sheriff Giles and Dr. Young for joining us as well. In addition to the service authority billing issue I mentioned during the Board of Directors' report, we heard from a number of constituents regarding the need to update the golf cart ordinance, requests for redock traffic calming study on the weekends, and a variety of enforcement issues for Sheriff Giles. Residents also expressed their displeasure at the decision to close the convenience centers on Sundays. I want to thank also the Fairview Beach Residents Association for providing us with this opportunity after their meeting. On Thursday, July 9th, as Mr. Stonehill mentioned, I co-hosted a town hall with him at Barnesfield Park for developers of the resort community rezoning application before the Planning Commission to meet citizens and answer any questions they may have. Thank you for, Dr. Young, for joining us as well. We informed citizens that they will have two opportunities to provide public comment regarding the project. First, at the upcoming Planning Commission meeting this Thursday, July 16th, and once again, when the project is heard by the Board of Supervisors. This past Friday, July 10th, I participated in a conference call for elected officials hosted by Congressman Rob Whitman. And there was a lot of information provided in the call. I typed very detailed notes this time. They, as I said, will be shared with Project 94, with the Freelance Star, and on my Facebook page. A lot of information about broadband, just as Mr. Stonehill stated during his board report, a lot of work being done there, and a lot of information about school reopening. So make sure and check that out. And lastly, on Saturday, July 11th, I hosted Meet Me at the Park office hours from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Sedell Brooks Junior Park. Two citizens visited with me regarding a variety of issues, including parks, the Nice Bridge project, upcoming public hearings, and school reopening plans. As of right now, I tentatively plan to hold Meet Me at the Park office hours again at Sedell Brooks Junior Park on Saturday, August 8th and Saturday, August 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., as long as the weather permits. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. Mr. Bush.
Did this right. Does it work? Thank you, Madam Chair. On June 27th, I had a great turnout for a wonderful meeting with the folks at Fairview Beach. It was great to be able to engage in face-to-face conversations again. Thank you to all who came out and participated in the discussion, and a special thanks to Mike Bennett and the Fairview Beach Residents Association for the opportunity, and for Annie Kupka, Chris Giles, and Dr. Young for availing themselves to this conversation. On July 5th, I was truly honored to have been elected as the Vice Chairman of the King George Republican Committee. On July 10th, naval support activity South Potomac welcomed Captain Todd Copeland and said goodbye to Captain Michael O'Leary during a change of command. I'd like to extend a welcome aboard to Captain Copeland, and thank you to Captain O'Leary for his leadership and support to our King George community. Regarding some of the public comment that was given this evening, Mr. Simonwell? Thank you for coming out and giving your comments. You made some good points. But the public beach Wayside referendum that you had pointed out, that was something that wouldn't have been up for, for something of that format. What we were basically looking at is, after numerous negotiations and numerous properties that we looked at and we submitted to VDOT, they declined it. At the end of the day, if we didn't take this option, what was going to happen was they were going to seize the land, and the county of King George could have done nothing about it, and we would have gotten nothing in return for it either. So that's how, how that kind of played out. As far as the retail and economic revitalization, the impacts that you had brought out, I absolutely agree. I think Mr. Jenkins, before he left the board, was working very hard on trying to get something done. Unfortunately, we didn't get it done before he left. But there are plans in place. I think Mr. Nick Miner is working on that. But something that was a very common theme in the public comment this evening was internet and the lack thereof. That also impacts businesses. And then with the, with the closure from the governor, the phases that we're in, those businesses were not able to open, or they were opening under restrictions. So they're, they're going to feel that. I think that the way that the checks went out from, people call it Trump money, the federal government, I think that should have been done differently. But that doesn't get us anywhere. Hopefully, in the future, if something else is done, that they will look at the impact to small businesses. And I would encourage you reaching out to Congressman Whitman to see if he can lobby on some of those concerns. Christine Fauchy's comments, unfortunately, King George County cannot direct a private company to come here. We, as a county, cannot have zero, absolutely zero authority over a private company to bring internet to King George. That's just the truth. But we are definitely working hard. I know a lot of things have come and gone. There's been a lot of grant opportunities. There's been a lot of companies that have come to us, but we have to do our homework, and we have to look at, is it stable? The county lost its shirt in the past, and I know we have to be able to move forward and not always worry about that, that ghost from the past. But if we're going to make an investment with taxpayer dollars, we need to make sure we're on solid footing. And I think we're actually working towards that. Mr. Grego, internet is a vital utility. It's, it isn't a nice-to-have. Grant for broadband, any possibilities that there is? Grant for broadband, any possibilities that there is for internet expansion in King George? For myself, and I know the board, that we're willing to look at anything. It may not work out, but we're definitely willing to do our homework and see what possibilities are out there. I mean, we've been campaigning on this, the supervisors up here, supervisors of the past. Internet's been a campaign talking point for over a decade, and still, here we are. We're trying to make it happen, but eventually, we're just going to have to pull the trigger on something, because it's not only impacting our economic development, but now with the way things are with this COVID mess, distance learning, people going to work, it's a way of life now. So we definitely need to look at that. To the Carabots, thank you very much for your comments. But I think a good question was raised, and I'd like to know, why is the public accessing the county's new acquired site at this point? I don't believe it's open to the public, so I'd like that looked into. Nobody should be accessing that property at this point. And Madam Chair, that concludes my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Granger.
Hello? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came out and spoke. Ms. Carabots, thank you for sharing your concerns. I know that you and your husband have spoken here a number of times. And to segue also into Mr. Simonoff's comments about Wayside Park, I know we said it a number of times, the public didn't get an opportunity to weigh in. The whole idea was parkland, that was supposed to be parkland in perpetuity, which generally means forever. So how did they take it? They made the decision to take it, the rules then were that they have to provide us with something of equivalent value. And as Mr. Bush said, we worked, it was over multiple years, we were looking at properties, trying to find something, and it was very challenging to find something that would meet the needs. And so I don't think we found something perfect, but you know, it's what we found. So it was better to take something, because it was getting to the point where they were going to possibly say, hey, you're not going to get anything. So our feet were to the fire a little bit on that. But I still appreciate the concern, speech for the Carabots who live right there and the challenges they're facing. Simonoff also brought up county's plan for businesses. Mr. Bush again brought up Mr. Jenkins, who was on the board previously, and he did push for small businesses in particular. We did pass at least the one to deal with the water connection fees. I know that there's a desire to add more to the toolbox in order to help incentivize small businesses in particular. I know Mr. Miner's working on that, and I have had conversations with him, but you know, it's finding the right way to incentivize and help businesses that will be productive to come into the county so it can generate revenue for us and so they can be successful. So it does take time, but those are great points, and I appreciate it. Mr. Grago, Ms. Seakley and Ms. Foché all spoke about internet access. I absolutely agree. This is, especially with the current situation that we're in with COVID and education, very much of me, previously at our VACO sessions, our main priority has always been equal taxing authority. And so I think, you know, with the way that we see things right now, I think it might actually be internet access to all people. It's really challenging, especially with, I think, education in this year, how to make sure that all the children here receiving the education that they're going to require to help make sure they're educated and they can grow up and be productive members of society. So I think that is probably the highest one at this moment, and seeing where we're at right now with the challenges we're facing. With all that said, I would like to say thank you to the schools and their staff, just for their, I know they haven't started yet, I know it's going to be challenged this year, but I know they're professional. And as I said, the education of our children is very important. They're the next step. And you know, it's something I, you know, we worry about the virus and people being infected, but children being educated is very important as well, and them falling behind is a big concern as well, and certainly don't want to see that. So thank you to all the staff, those who teach, drive the kids, serve meals, staff, you know, administration. So thank you to all of them, and you know, just really hoping everything goes well this year. So thank you for what you guys do. Other than that, on June 22nd, I did attend an FRA meeting. Things are going well. We are looking at, with the budgets, like everyone else challenging with budgets, but there were some savings due to the fact that we haven't been able, or I guess the staff hasn't been able to go out on calls to go investigate new businesses because of the whole shutdown of everything. So they've saved some money from the previous year, so that can carry over to help into the next year and to continue those activities. So that's encouraging from that perspective at least. Last thing I have is, Mr. Chris Clark reached out and had shared that consensus completes at a 68.6% self-response, which is good, it's better than it was last 10 years ago. More is always better, but the Census Bureau is now starting to look for events to put numerators, which are census takers, and they're looking to strengthen that in the next few weeks. And so they have some applications in for the farmer's market, and Chris has been looking into different county spaces that they might be able to use, like the Citizen Center, Library and Rubbercomb. So hopefully, we'll get through that smoothly as well. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. I like that you brought up Mr. Clark. When I met with GWRC's representative, Linda Millsap, she made a point to say that Chris Clark is the superstar in the region of the census count, so I want to have a shout-out to Mr. Clark and all he does, because he is the superstar in the region for the census counts, as they put it, because GWRC helps with that, and that's George Washington Regional Commission. I also want to thank everyone who came out today to talk about broadband. I understand it well. I am one of those people who lives right off 301, but is underserved, because it would cost $27,000 to lay a line down my road. So I have MiFi hotspot. So I understand your concerns, it's just very challenging a lot. When I was at the NACO conference they brought up, that broadband should be considered like a public utility, is because it's vital and needed, and we're going to address it later. And I had contacted those with the grant that's later in this program, and they gave me some more information, which I'll share at that time. Concerning Roslin Road and Wayside Park, as I'm more than willing to come anytime to see Mr. Carabots, he actually waved to me last week, I was down at the Buckler property. And also, Mr. Carabots, as they remember, I held a town hall with Dr. Young, and Mr. Bush was there, and Mr. Stonehill came as a member of the audience, because he was not sworn in yet, and we had talked to Roslin Road about the whole, how Wayside Park and the whole thing with the land swap. And Mr. Simonoff, you might not know, but the Federal Parks to Land Program is a very complicated program, and you, it has covenants on it, and you only can do certain things. And those covenants transferred from Wayside now onto the new property, but you're under restrictions, and you only can do certain things. And the whole project in the land swap had over 30 entities that had to give their okay and their eyes on it before. So it was well-reversed, but we really didn't have a lot of say in it. They were at the point, we were holding up the bridge, and they were going to do what they needed to do to get it done, and so we got the best offer that we could for King George. All right. Since our last meeting on June 16th, I met with representatives from GWRC and David Beal from the Virginia Department of Transportation about our traffic and road concerns in King George County off of Route 301. We called at the King George Transportation Field Trip, and I want to thank Mr. Beal, Linda Millsaps, and Adam Hager for joining me on the tour. We viewed the intersection of Route 205, 301, Route 301, and Eden Drive and Roslin Road. Mr. Jim Lynch from the Dahlgren Heritage Trail also talked to the group about concerns on Route 218 near Caledon State Park and safe access to the trails. A project to make a small stretch of roads safe for hikers, bikers, and families could be a good future smart-scale project. They have offered to meet in October, so they could take a look at it together. At even Eden Drive, VDOT is aware and will look to ensure the grass is mowed at that cut-through with Route 301 to help cars with the sight difference, sight distance. I know I'm one of those people that has a small car, and when the grass is high, it becomes a safety concern. He saw it, saw the cars going over, and he said, you're right, probably needs to be mowed a little bit more. Concerning Roslin Road and its intersection near the Harry Nice Bridge, the connection moves 200 feet to the south, and lefts out are restricted, and a southbound right turn lane is provided. This, coming from Mr. Beal, should ensure ample sight distance for the left end. The bridge construction will start next month and is scheduled to be complete in 2023. And I just want to thank them for coming out and looking our concerns, because I know Ms. Millsap said to me, we don't get out to King George very often, and it was really important to see, when you bring up road projects in smart scale, what it's about. As a member of the Rappahannock Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors, I would like to thank all the staff and their executive director, Pat Holland. They have added over 500 residents in four Fredericksburg restaurants that serve hot meals to shut-in seniors. And I want to just shout out to any King George restaurants that would like to be part of it, please contact me, and I could get you in contact with Ms. Holland, and they pay, they have, they get reimbursed, and the restaurants get reimbursed, but they deliver hot meals to seniors that cannot get out due to COVID. A lot of them are high-risk, and they provide hot meals to those seniors. They do visits and phone check-ins, just to make sure they're okay and to check on their health. They'll even run grocery runs, get prescriptions, and anything they need from Walmart or CVS. I met with several constituents, Mr. Mark Webb and Mr. Fred Davies, concerning issues with development and property rights. I thank you to Mr. Davies for an awesome interview about his remembrance of King George over the last 88 years of his life. I also interviewed Mrs. Elizabeth Lee, who knows everything about genealogy in this county, and got an autographed copy of her new book, The Last Hope, The Truths and Legends of John Wilkes Booth, 34-Hour Escape Through King George County. You can pick up a copy of Ms. Lee's book from her or at the King George Historical Society. And once again, I would love to talk with more citizens and collect your stories. Just send me an email, and we can set up a time to videotape. For the last, this was the email that I received, and this email is entitled, Concerning the Confederate Memorial on the Courthouse Grounds. In the next Board of Supervisor meeting on July 14th, please address your plans to remove the Confederate memorial that is prominently displayed on the front lawn of the King George Courthouse grounds. Surely, you all have a plan to remove this stony monument to a graveyard where it belongs, as opposed to allowing it to remain in the heart of our county as an insult to all black citizens? If not, why not? Signed, Mr. David E. Jones, 5415, Winston Place, King George, Virginia. I turn it over now. Mr. Britton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this working? I was aware, of course, that you had received that email. Dr. Young let me know about it, and on our side, on the legal side, we're looking into it. It's an old obelisk, it's an old memorial, and it has a lot of history to it. Thank you, Madam Chair, for providing some of that from the museum, and I know Dr. Young has it well in hand as to digging down. But as you indicated, on the bridge, there are many layers and many different iterations of who started it, who put it up, whose land was it on, who owned it, and things like that. So thank you for forwarding that email. It's something that Dr. Young had mentioned long ago and was in his optic, and we will run it down on both our fronts and get a report back to you as soon as we know exactly the status of it. That includes a lot, there's a lot of names on it and the genealogy of those names, as you pointed out. So that's what we're doing in response to your request and Dr. Young, but obviously, that's my take on it. Dr. Young may know something at this time, but we're working on it.
Dr. Young.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Britton is absolutely correct. Just the cursory review that we have done thus far, by all means, it was originally a Confederate memorial, but there's some questions on if throughout the history of that monument, if it's added union participation by King George residents. It's even been discovered that there's actually a couple of black slaves that are actually memorialized on the memorial. So I think there's a lot of research that needs to go into the topic and go into this statute, so we can get a clear understanding of exactly what it is. Was it a Confederate memorial? Yes, but is that what it is now? We can't say with absolute fidelity. We're just going to have to do a little bit of research and bring a report back to the board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Britton and Dr. Young, for looking into it. I appreciate and look forward to your report. That is the end of my board report. All right. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Yes.
I'm sorry, but did we, before I seconded it, did we have to approve the changes, the amendments we made earlier during the consent agenda?
We made a motion to amend the consent agenda based off Dr. Young's input, and so the consent agenda has changed to what he presented.
Awesome. Sorry about that. Thank you.
No, that's okay.
Good question.
All right. Now we're up to the county officials' reports, constitutional officers.
No report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Britton reported the county attorney. First up, dissolution of the wireless authority.
Yes, Madam Chair. There's been a lot of talk about wireless, I'm aware of that. There was a wireless authority, and it got dissolved. If I could, no, thank you. I got a bum leg here. It got dissolved, so I'm handing out, when I came on board a few months ago, I sent out, spoke with Dr. Young, and got a checklist and made sure that we had done everything that was necessary, ended the insurance, that we weren't paying insurance premiums on something, things like that, and that all of the legal documents were in order. It turned out that there was one outstanding document from the SCC, the State Corporation Commission, and we got it. So that's now done. It's put to rest. That's all there was on that. I just wanted to hand that out and make that a record, there's nothing further, and to tell you that I had run down everything that was necessary, decommissioning and all that. The next matter, I believe, is up, is delinquent accounts and collections, advertisement of proposed collection ordinance, and this is a bit more involved. So a few months ago, I just started meeting with all of the heads of the county, be they the Commissioner of the Revenue, the Treasurer, Mr. Weekly, anyone who has an outstanding account, and going over the various accounts and where we were. I was getting a couple of emails from the Commissioner of the Revenue, who stays on top of this, hey, here's a vehicle tax case that the person's not paying, meals taxes, a sales and use tax, and what have you. So some of these are actually misdemeanors, so they go through the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, they're handled by the Assistant Commonwealth Attorney, Deputy Commonwealth Attorney, who's also part of the county attorney's office, and so he's able to handle these things. There are other things in zoning and what have you, and I just wanted to get an aspect. How many cases do we have? If there's six or seven a year, fine, I can do it, but if there's a, well, it turned out that at any given time, on the county side, there's about 100. And not all of these go to court, but they're all collection cases. There's one person who's very capable in the Treasurer's Office, but she's one person. And it turns out, on the service authority side, there was 550, with the revenue exceeding $200,000 in delinquent accounts and outstanding. So obviously, 650 cases, that's not something that we're going to be able to do in-house. So of course, I'm familiar with the various organizations throughout the Commonwealth. There's a great organization, Tax, which is run by Jeff Scharf and a bunch of other folks. He was at the Commissioner of Revenue's Office in Arlington, they have 100 folks. So I got Jeff, I called him, he came right down, he met with CC at the Treasurer's Office, Commissioner of Revenue, myself, and I invited Mr. Weekly. And you can see in the report here, everybody was extremely impressed. And this is a cradle-to-grave operation, where they are part of the bright system, which is the system that we use for our finances. So literally, when we push a button, they're in on every account, and they handle it from the initial contact, the follow-up contact, sending out the letters, making a payment plan, collecting the funds, and distributing to the county. And in the very rare case that it needs to go to court, which is usually someone who cannot be found, which is serviced through the Commonwealth, it's complicated, but you basically get a default judgment, and you put it, in case they sell any property in the county, it gets collected first. People who just won't pay, they're just think they're getting away with something, and people who can't be found. And their lawyers, their lawyers too, so they can handle all of that, everything, zero fiscal impact to the county, because the Virginia Code allows the county to pass an ordinance, which says that if you are delinquent on your account, we can add 20%, and that's what they make, which is reasonable. Most contingency fees for lawyers are 33%, so it's 20% by code. When I was Commonwealth Attorney, I used the Department of Taxation, which was 10 to 20%, I forget which, to collect outstanding court costs and fees. It worked very, very well. And so we interviewed him, well, liked him, you have a presentation from him, but all that I'm asking the board to do is, number one, to tell you that I thought I would get this in hand, for y'all to know, we've got sales and use tax, we've got, which, meals tax, those are fiduciary taxes. That means that the business is not entitled to those taxes. They're collecting sales tax on behalf of the Commonwealth of Virginia. taxes. They're collecting sales tax on behalf of the Commonwealth of Virginia and they hold it as a fiduciary. If you take that money, that's stealing. So, that's a crime. But the other taxes that come through are fees, costs, late fees, interest, and they all build up. So, these are civil matters. And that is what Mr. Scharf's office handles. And so, we wanted to find out, where are we at? And that's where we're at. And it's pretty significant. And I think that anyone in the Treasurer's Office, Commissioner of Revenue's Office, and certainly Mr. Weekly's office can tell you that they just would love to get something like this underway. I can handle all this, the vetting, the signing the contract, all that. But what the board needs to do is consider the proposed ordinance. So, what I'm asking today is if you would consider advertising the ordinance, which I put in there, to add 20% to a delinquent bill. I would finally note, these folks know what they're doing. They're respectful, dignified people. They understand, people get behind. They understand the difference between someone who made a mistake and is doing it intentionally. They understand someone who got behind and needs a payment plan. And they've done it. They represent over 80 localities in Virginia, including two of our neighbors, Spotsylvania and Westmoreland. I did speak with Westmoreland and they made a referral. I didn't speak with Spotsylvania because I spoke with some others. Everybody had good things to say. And actually, Jeff is known to our Treasurer's Office because he teaches the class to Treasurers. So, Jeff Scharf, one of the principals. So, it was good information, came right away. No matter who we contract with, ultimately, we're going to need this in place or else you're going to lose a third of the bill to a collection lawyer. So, I would ask the board to consider authorizing the advertisement of the ordinance as presented.
Is there any discussion?
So moved.
Second discussion?
Do we need to provide a date for the advertisement?
It's two weeks. So, I was thinking on the August 4th or 18th. They could be up and running in five business days. So, if you, and we have, I know Jonathan, I presented this at the Service Authority, Jonathan Weekly, he was ready to go because he has a quarter million dollars in revenue outstanding. So, the 4th would, I can't speak for who sends the advertisement to the newspaper, but it's not me. But assuming they can send it out tomorrow.
We.
Dr. Young, we've got a question for you. Mr. Granger?
The advertisement of the ordinance for the public hearing, would we want it for the, do we even need to identify the date? We just say we want to advertise?
Yeah, you do not need to identify the date.
Okay. I apologize then. I have nothing else.
All right. We have a motion properly second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Britton?
Tourism Advisory Committee Report. Sorry. Appreciate Dr. Young helping me out with my gimpy leg here. It is a lot of paper. Mr. Bush, you're exactly right. But you charged me last meeting, I believe it was, or I think it was, to figure out what's going on with Tourism Advisory Committee, number one. Is the money being handled correctly and what's the fund balance? So, in order to give you a complete update, I just went from, you know, the bottom to the top. So, you have every document there. And basically, the situation is, is that they have a charter. The Virginia Code allows for a county, a locality, actually, to have either a Tourism Advisory Committee or some type of Tourism Industrial Board. We have a Tourism Advisory Committee or do it yourselves. And if you do it yourselves, that's typically done by having a marketing manager or a tourism director, depending how big the county is. You may have several people like that. And then, they would meet with industry related to tourism and advise the board. And the board would actually make direct decisions. We have a Tourism Advisory Committee. That committee is active and robust. But what they do is they review contracts on a regular basis and then they advise you thumbs up or thumbs down or thumbs neutral on various contracts. And they also, as I understand it, do things that are, as they're directed, like please look into, and I'm making this up, the Fall Festival or the 300th Celebration or what have you. And then, they will go out and as directed, you know, find the contracts and make recommendations to you. So, we have a Tourism Advisory Committee. I've provided the charter. I think what isn't there is there's no strategic plan. There's no overall philosophic direction, at least that I could find. And maybe that's by design. I don't know. I wasn't around at that time. But the second thing is, how about the money? The process is this. We have, by state law, and I provided the code in there, the tax code, that we can charge 5% for what's called transient occupancy tax. That's what everybody else knows is that when you get at the hotel for $100 a night and then the bill's $190 a night, that's that extra, like, hotel tax, resort tax. Well, in Virginia, we are one of the listed counties that can charge 5%. The basic transient occupancy tax, hotel tax, is 2% in Virginia. But many jurisdictions can charge 5% and we do, by ordinance. 3% of that, or three fifths, not 3% of that, excuse me, three fifths of that, 3% of the tax, goes exclusively by law to tourism. It must be spent on tourism. So, I said, all right, is that happening? And it is. So, the Commissioner of the Revenue collects that, books it in her way, then she takes it over to the Treasurer's Office, which posts it. The Treasurer's Office then sends it to Finance, which puts it into a dedicated and specified account. All expenditures from the Tourism Committee go, Dr. Young is knowledgeable about them. And then, they get presented to the board before that happens. And then, you approve those individually. The average annual, I gave you three years. That was just something, I don't think you directed me on that. I just, standard accounting principles. I went back three years. I could go back farther if you wanted. We average $250,000, quarter million dollars a year, give or take. And over the past three years, that means that you've collected $750,000. You have a fund balance of 650, roughly. I'm not looking at the paper. But you have a fund balance of roughly $650,000. So, I'm not a forensic accountant, but I've done, you know, this a lot. And the money's tracked. It appears to be in order. And whether you want a fund balance of $650,000, I don't know. That's up to you and the Advisory Committee. But it's there. And I would say that the only thing perhaps that they could be charged with doing would be getting a overall plan. That is in the ordinance and the charter. And it appears that, it's in the code, excuse me, in the charter, which is, there's supposed to be a philosophic direction. Like, this is where we want to go. To use a zoning analogy, we want this type of zoning in this area, this type of zoning in this area. And for them, it would be meet with all the industry. This is where we want entertainment, events, recreation, hotels and that type of thing. That may exist, so I apologize. But no one was able to produce it from me. I did work with Dr. Young. He was very helpful. Actually sent me a very small overview, which was totally accurate in the beginning, which was my framework with Nick Minor. And thanks to Finance, the Commissioner of the Revenue and the Treasurer, who got back to me like immediately with all the information. So, it was great.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Do you guys have any questions? Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Britton, you said that three fifths of the funds had to be allocated towards just tourism.
By law.
What about the remaining two?
General fund.
Okay. So, it can be used for things outside of direct tourism if that percentage remains intact?
The two fifths can be used for general funds. You could order that it be applied only to that, but.
No, I was just curious about.
Dr. Young knows about this very well.
Yeah. I want to make sure that we're not confusing two things. We're talking about the tourism fund, which is what you have the balance on. And what Matt, you're referring to is the transient occupancy tax, correct? Where 3% of the transient occupancy tax is going towards.
Let me, yeah.
The tourism fund. So, two fifths is automatically going into our general fund as we sit today. The remaining three fifths is going into this tourism fund, which is what this balance that we're looking at now, the $635,000, is that three fifths.
The tourism fund, that's the 3% that's coming from transient occupancy tax. Then, the other 2% automatically is going into the general fund already.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarity.
So, for every hotel dollar, 2 cents goes into the, for every hotel dollar, we collect an extra 5 cents. 2 cents goes into the general fund. 3 cents goes into tourism.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Yes, I do have a question. So, at the bottom of your memo, Mr. Britton, when it says the county collects approximately $250,000 annually in designated tourism funds from the TOT, the transient occupancy tax, that $250,000 represents approximately the 3%, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, and part of why we asked you to examine this is because we'd heard some questions from the Tourism Advisory Committee members. Because if you look at how the revenues are reported, the budgeted amount and the appropriated amounts are $92,000.
Yes.
And so, we have at least one hotel in particular that the owner-operator was pretty sure he himself had probably collected.
I can go back. I didn't poison the well. I didn't make, I was aware of that. I didn't make any statements. I just said, would you please provide, you know.
Sure.
So, Mr. Stonehill can tell you.
I can answer that.
Yeah. But I was told the same thing and that's what's causing the confusion. But there is an answer, which is, Mr. Young, Dr. Young's going to give you.
Yes, ma'am. Traditionally, the tourism fund has been budgeted on the revenue side of the spreadsheet for county budget at $92,000 annually. And if you look at previous years, last seven, eight years, they purposely have kept that conservative number. Number one, for the volatility of the funding, like right now, we have a recession. You know, as you're fully aware, the majority of our budget is built off of real estate taxes, which is stable. And therefore, we can make stable projections on that revenue before these consumer taxes, like transient occupancy tax. Budgetary practices to be prudent, they decided that, long before this board got here or this administration got here, that it was probably prudent to keep it at a place, as a place market in the budget. A place market is $92,000, just in the event that there is a recession and we don't depend on that money in our budget, just not to receive that revenue. And that's what's led to, through that conservative budgeting, that's how we ended up with this fund balance. If that's what you want to call it, the $635,000. So, it was just making sure that we don't make ourselves victim to a volatile consumer tax.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
And I was told that too. I asked the question. I said, what is the revenue? And they said $92,000. There is a, it's just a nomenclature issue. The budgeted amount that they're predicting, projecting is 92. The funded amount annually is approximately $250,000. So, I'm sure if someone called up and asked that and they said, hey, how much goes into the tourism fund every year? They'd say $92,000. But that's the budgeted amount. These are the actual amounts. And there was a little, I had that confusion, but I knew the answer. And so, but I did drill all the way down. And Finance, they had all the records for years and years and years back, a long time with, and they, so, it was just a nomenclature issue, from what I found.
Thank you very much. I appreciate both of you addressing that. That was a major concern. And I wanted to make sure publicly that we let everyone know it's just a nomenclature issue. It's how it's categorized in the budget for purposes of being conservative. So, thank you again. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just don't have. I'm very happy. Thank you. You did a thorough job. I had always had a question for all my time on the board about what we could use with the money. And Mr. Bush, as you know, when we first came on the board, we were told one thing. But doing this research, it finds out that the options are a lot more open for using it to promote tourism, including, I've always said, putting a pavilion at Sedell Brooks Park because we have picnic benches, a pavilion or bathrooms. So, it's really great to see that, that it can, it's not totally restricted. And it's a lot, a little more open.
And I did include in your packet, I know people go running from the room and lawyers start reading the law. But in your packets are the various code sections and ordinances related to it. If you did want to say, do we need a blended system? Do we want to give more direction to the tax? Do we want marketing, what have you? Those options are available to you. And so, I put those in there. So, if y'all have any questions, I can follow up.
Thank you. One other question I'd like to ask the board. Do we want to maybe task the Tourism Committee of doing a strategic plan? Because I think that would be quite vital.
Yes, I believe we should, if they haven't, if they're supposed to, yes.
Does anybody have consensus for that? Mr. Bush? All right. If, Dr. Young, and Mr. Minor, can you tell the Tourism Committee? We appreciate a strategic plan. I think it'd be really cool.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Britton, for doing this research and to Finance for getting all the information.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, your indulgence, please, before we leave this item. So, the other part of the discussion, if you all recall last month, was one of the members of the Tourism Advisory Committee, Mr. Baird, was here in person and requested that we consider a joint work session with the Tourism Advisory Committee. Do we want to consider that? And if so, direct Dr. Young and Economic Development and Tourism Staff to reach out to them to get dates they might be interested or available, if the board desires to do so?
What do you guys think about that?
I would agree. Mr. Baird gave the impression that there was some confusion, maybe on the Tourism Advisory Committee about maybe what's expected. And so, if there's some confusion and they want to meet and try to hash out exactly what we're looking for and so that we all have clarity, then I think that makes sense.
All right. Dr. Young, thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Cupca.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Britton?
Madam Chair, the good news is, the next two items are I can do together. So, we have a police-requested towing board. And that means, if, we don't have police, but if the law enforcement, the sheriff, we have state police, or state police request a vehicle to be towed, then it falls under our ordinance. And there are a lot of reasons for that. But we have eight different towers on the rotation at any time and they're governed and regulated by the ordinance. Well, the board, actually Sheriff Giles and I, probably 15 years ago, worked together in drafting up that original ordinance. It needs some updating. It needs some amending. We had the creation of the tow, oh, also, the ordinance creates a towing board of five members, law enforcement officers and towers and citizens. And so, now that it's created, we need to update it for how do they, what's the procedure for them to act? So, we reinvigorated that when I found out they hadn't met in a while. We reinvigorated that. Y'all, if you recall, about a month, month and a half ago, appointed, reappointed the board. And they held their first two meetings. Unfortunately, one of the board members resigned. So, now there's an opening. So, the sheriff's office, again, I don't know if you recall, but Patrick Weston did some heavy lifting and found five people. It's tough to find people on boards, as you know. So, he did. And he has also found Mr. Cave. And I put his, the letter that he wrote in, and he lives in front of the high school, if you wanted to know a district and where he was. And he'd be happy to serve. He sent you a note, a nice note there about his willingness and desire and qualifications. And the sheriff's office is making that recommendation. So, that would be one thing to fill the seat vacated by Mr. Zwicker. The second thing is, I would ask you to consider advertising the updates to the ordinance for your consideration after public hearing. And the main thing is level funding, I mean level billing. So, right now, eight people could charge, the eight different, eight towers could charge eight different individuals who had their cars towed, the different numbers. So, you and all of us in a row could have our car towed from the exact same spot, the exact same 10 miles, and all be charged differently. Well, I can tell you from being in court, and so can Mr. Stonehill, people get upset about it. It doesn't matter whether they had their car towed. It doesn't matter whether they had their car towed because they were doing something wrong to begin with, and that it's a lot easier to get out, you know, into trouble than out of trouble. They don't, and Ms. Kupka can tell you, they don't care. If you got charged $375, and they're waiting in court, and the person in front of them got charged $175, they're gonna tell, and then the judge might do something about that and reduce, and we have to still pay that. And so, the Commonwealth and the locality lose. So, the sheriff's office said, we want to level bill. We want the same fee for all the towers who want to be on this, for the same services. Similarly situated people should be treated similarly. And that's what it is. There's some also just housekeeping. So, those would be the two things I'd ask, that you consider the appointment of Mr. Cave, if you see fit, or someone else, and that you consider advertising the ordinance, you know, for some date in the future.
I move to appoint Mr. Robert Cave to the tow board.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
I move to advertise the changes to the tow board ordinance. As presented.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
Thank you, Mr. Britton, again, for bringing this to our attention. I cannot believe that we can charge different individuals, or, I'm sorry, we don't charge them, but the tow companies are able or allowed currently to charge different individuals, different fees for, you're talking about police toes, is that correct?
Yeah, and storage.
Yeah, police toes. Law enforcement requested toes, and they don't have to abide by a contract rate, they, individual tow companies can charge whatever they want right now.
Unless you change the ordinance.
Unless we change the ordinance. Yes, please. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka.
I got one more question before you go. Mr. Britton, storage as well?
Yes. Yes, all the fees that'll be set by the board and the sheriff's office, but, so that the ordinance is nimble and you don't have to amend the ordinance every single time the fee changes, it goes up or down $10, we have provided a provision in there that the board sets the fees annually. The tow board, so it doesn't have to come back to y'all.
Got you.
By the way, by statute, the tow board has to recommend changes to the towing ordinance, and they did. They met, they had a public hearing, they were there, I helped draft up the agenda, they went through all these, and these are the ones that they accepted and recommend to you themselves. I should have said that.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Do we have any other questions? So, you have a motion properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Britton. Next up, increase in courthouse security fee.
Yeah, and I apologize, this and the last one, they got caught in the cyber world, so I had to email them to you. The rest of them might have paper documents, but, good for the trees, but maybe not so good for the board. This is just a one-pager, though. Right now, if you get arrested, you go to court, and you're presumed innocent, and you don't have to pay anything. If you get acquitted, or the charges get dropped, you don't have to pay anything. But if you get convicted, then you have to pay a bunch of fines and costs and fees, and restitution if you damaged property or stole something, or hurt somebody. One of those fees is the courthouse security fee. That's currently $10. As of July 1st, y'all can raise it to 20. Vic Mason has, is telling you about it. I'm telling you about it. We're not taking a position on it. Obviously, courthouse security has been become very expensive lately, for various reasons, mostly the pandemic. So, but, I haven't been asked, and I won't give you my opinion, but that's what you can do, and most jurisdictions are upping the courthouse fee.
So, this would be, or, if we want to move forward, we would make a motion to advertise?
Yes, it's an ordinance change. Currently, I put the ordinance in there, but I just emailed it to you, so you might not have seen it. But I put the old ordinance, and I did the heavy lifting of changing the number 10 to 20. So, we already have an ordinance, but it's at 10 bucks. This is traditionally similar to the 20% fee for a delinquent account, balancing the costs on the back of the people who create the costs.
I move to advertise for a change to the courthouse security fee ordinance as presented, changing it from a $10 fee to a $20 fee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Last up, Hopyard deed approval.
Only two more, Madam Chair, I promise. I'm handing up to you, Madam Chair, you're gonna get two. You'll get the original and a copy. Deeds, you may recall, in one of the last couple of board meetings, you authorized and executed a deed of dedication subdivision from Hopyard. What happened, and Ms. Hall's here, what happens is, is Hopyard, or any subdivision, they hit milestones, and then they have proffers, zoning ordinance, and they have to do certain things when they hit a milestone. It can be various things, it can be time, it can be number of houses. This is milestone 16. And so, now, they are required, and they have done the requirement to dedicate certain things, both to the county and to the service authority. We brought this same document to the service authority, and it was approved. Two of you were there, and we drilled down on this one, because I believe it was Ms. Kupka found a typo on the last one. So, I had missed, everybody reviewed it this time as best we could. So, if there's a typo on it, it's my fault, because we looked at it. Ms. Hall looked at it, she weakly looked at it, it's in order. And if you think it's in order, then I would suggest that you have a motion to accept subdivision deed and dedication to the Hopyard, from Hopyard. And then, I've already signed it as a form, and, Madam Chair, you and, I believe, Dr. Young would need to sign it.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve and adopt the subdivision deed and dedication as presented for Hopyard.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And I do have one addition, I just got it hours ago, but it's good news, so I thought I'd bring it. There had been a bus accident, apparently, a few years ago, maybe y'all know about it, and the county got sued, but it was a school bus accident, excuse me. And so, that suit against the county was dropped. That's called a non-suit, and so, I'm just handing up the order. I'm sure y'all had an optic on that, and maybe wanted to, no, I mean, obviously, the school board, anyway. So, the county's been dropped out of it, and I'm handing up what's called a non-suit order. So, you don't, yes, you're welcome. No one had asked me about this, but I had just been tracking it when I did the handoff in March.
Thank you, Mr. Britton, for bringing that to our attention.
I'm not gonna ask Mr. Young to get up, Dr. Young to get up anymore. I feel.
I appreciate it.
I wish I could do it.
All right, next up, Dr. Young, is the CARES Act presentation.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris is gonna go ahead and load the slides, so please bear with me. I also emailed you all the slides, and they're included in the board packet as well. Here's our agenda. Next slide. So, as the board is aware, we've talked in depth, but I wanted to revisit the topic and provide more background, just to ensure that the general public that may be arriving to this conversation just now has a full understanding of the topic that we're discussing, which is the CARES Act. Little bit of background, in March 2020, the US government established a relief fund called CARES Fund, to the tune of $150 billion. They decided that they was gonna distro those funds to the states in accordance to the size of their population. The state of Virginia received their allocation and decided that in turn, they was gonna maintain 55% of the funding, they was gonna distro 45% of the funding to counties in accordance with the size of their population. For King George County, that local allocation equated to $2.3 million, slightly over $2.3 million. Next slide. Once we have received that allocation of slightly over $2.3 million, we did receive instructions from both the Department of Treasury, I'm sorry, from both the federal and the state Department, Department of Treasury, on how we could spend those monies. First, they stated that it was necessary for the fund, whatever we spent these funds on, it was in the response to a public health emergency. They would have to cover costs that were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27, 2020, which for us, translates into the fiscal year 1920 budget. Or, if you did decide that you were gonna pay for costs that were executed in the fiscal year 1920 budget, it had to be for costs or purposes that weren't originally intended for when that expenditure was allocated. For example, we did have parks and rec employees that were budgeted for in fiscal year 1920 budget to run recreation programs. However, once recreation programs were suspended, we then repurposed those parks and rec employees to the convenience centers, to the Commission of Revenues Office, to the registrar, to assist with other staffing gaps that we had in the administration. So, by definition, those expenditures in the 1920 budget would qualify as legal expenditures against the CARES Act funding. In addition, the final rule that was provided to us in the guidance was, these costs would have to incur before, I mean, after March 21, 2020, and through December 30, 2020. That's a very important point, because after December 30, 2020, whatever funds isn't expended, has to be turned back over to the state, and it will be returned to the federal government. Next slide. A little bit more guidance regarding legitimate expenditures. Expenditures, again, have to be a direct response to a medical or a public health emergency, and these expenditures have to be necessary, and they must be reasonable. Necessary, meaning that any county official or government official could see that, hey, yeah, this is a logical expense that would qualify for CARES Act funding. And then, if that is decided, whatever monies is put towards that expense, it would be a reasonable cost, and we wouldn't be price gouged for whatever expenditure that we pursue. Next slide. On the slides, I wanted to capture a couple examples of public, I mean, of legitimate expenditures. Let me highlight expenses to improve telework capabilities, because that significantly impacted King George County government's ability to maintain a continuity of government. Under economic support, I want to highlight expenditures related to the provision of grants for small businesses. I'll highlight in that fact, because as the board is fully aware, this pandemic has affected the economic viability of our small business community. So, I just want to highlight that, that the board was so moved that a portion of this expenditure, I mean, of this funding could address that situation in our small business community. And then, finally, payroll expenses for public safety, public health, and similarly related employees. And I really do want to stress the fact that, when they said that payroll for public safety would be a legitimate expense, public safety is discreetly defined in the FAQs and guidance from the Virginia Department of Health, and I have provided you all those FAQs, and you all can reference that to get a good understanding of which jobs or careers qualify for legitimate expenses against the CARES Act. Next slide. Here's some examples of illegitimate expenditures. Just the biggest takeaway from here, at least from the administration, is that this pay cannot be utilized to fund pay raises or workforce bonuses. They do have a statute in there where it can be utilized for hazard pay, but it's for hazard pay specifically for public safety officials, as defined by the guidance in the FAQ from the Department of Treasury. Next slide. Matt Maser, since I keep the slide in here, just explaining that we do have to maintain a strong record-keeping system to ensure that in the event that we were audited, we have strong records detailing and establishing a paper trail for the expenditures against this fund. Next slide. So, with that being said, I wanted to make a recommended spending proposal to the board. Again, I say recommended, because I'm not asking the board to make any decisions tonight. Rather, what we are going to recommend is, board consider this proposal, but establish a work session date, so we can sharpen our pencils, get more guidance from the board, and have a deliberate discussion on how we can leverage this funding to the maximum for King George County's interest. According to the proposal, as you see at the top, we have a total fund, total amount of funding of $2,341,338. What I would recommend is, 69% of that funding go towards the fiscal year 2021 budget, and that is deliberate. I know that that's a large chunk of money, but what I would like to stress to the board is, if we utilize $1,619,903 of the CARES Act funding to pay for the fiscal year 20, I mean, and we take that exact number out of the fiscal year 2021 budget, since it would be covered by the CARES Act funding, it could be returned to the general fund, and it would help to ease some of the financial impact that we've experienced, you know, budgetary-wise for fiscal year 2021 budget. With that understanding, we then recommend that 17% or $400,000 of the CARES Act funding be allocated to department purchases. I have asked all our departments that had funding requests to capture those funding requests with explanations on the rationale behind the request. I have forwarded it to the board, and what I recommend to the board is, during that work session, we'd run something similar to a CIP process, where the board has opportunity to review each department's projects, they have an opportunity to engage with the department heads, to establish the priority, and then we will maintain a spreadsheet where the board takes a collective vote on each department project, and determine which projects that they want to fund with the CARES Act funding. If you also note, I know that Mr. Semenov was asking about this, we're recommending that 10% of the funding, or $234,000, be established for a small business grants program. If the board was so moved to move forward with that initiative, what do we recommend is that that funding be allocated to the EDA. Nick Minor has been working closely with the EDA for what that program would look like, and the EDA would basically govern the small business program to ensure that we're giving some type of ease to the small business community. Finally, you'll see that also asking for $21,000, even though I finally get the cost estimates back today, it's more like $15,000 for a glass barrier project. The purpose of the glass barrier project is, as you're fully aware, we utilize Plexiglas and other expedient measures to create a barrier between high-touch point areas where we have citizens and county employees engaging to conduct county business. Well, that was a temporary solution, just to bring the staff back into the buildings. What I would recommend is, we pursue a glass barrier project where we actually have actual glass, not bulletproof glass or anything like that, but professionally installed glass that's aesthetically pleasing, has more permanent nature, and it's something that'd be more protective of the general public and county staff as we move forward, because we simply don't know when or how long this pandemic's gonna last. So, I would recommend a permanent solution versus the continued use of a temporary solution. With that being said, you add those all up, you see that that leaves us a $66,435 deficit, which we would basically have as a contingency, and that contingency would be established for any unforeseen purchases, grants, or third-party requests. When I say third-party requests, as we speak, I'm receiving requests from different nonprofit organizations, other civic organizations, and I wholly expect that through the end of December, there're gonna be some pop-ups of other agencies that request money. So, I'd recommend that the board maintain that contingency. In the event another priority is identified by the board, every money's there to address that priority. Next slide. So, again, the recommended way forward, and that, of course, is dependent on the direction of the board, but I recommend that the board establish a work session date, or allow the county staff to advertise a special meeting date for a work session regarding the CARES Act funding. Again, the county departments will present projects, a procedure that replicates our CIP process. The board would then approve the official CARES Act spend plan for King George County. After that is completed, we would then bring a resolution appropriating those funds at a subsequent DLW meeting. With that being said, next slide. I'll stand by for any guidance or questions from the board.
Do you have any questions? Want us to set that date right now for our work session? Because I think that's a great idea.
Yes, Madam Chair.
How soon is, how soon?
I would recommend, I know that there's staff members that are gonna be out. I would recommend, I know that there's staff members that are going to be out, so what I would recommend is the week, the week of the 27th, if that's not too fast. Okay, I'd recommend the week of August 3. And the reason why I'm asking for such a quick turnaround because again, there is a shelf life for the money. December 30 is, seems quite distant, but when you are trying to spend $2.3 million, especially if there are going to be procurement hurdles, we got to make sure that we can get the guidance as quickly as possible from the board so we can go ahead and execute.
Madam Chair, I would concur with trying to get this done as soon as possible because looking at some of the suggestions, I really like what Dr. Young put in here about the small business grants. That's probably going to be a process if the EDA is having to run that. And I mean, if we're going to be in August, that's going to give the EDA a short timeline to turn around and get those approved and move forward with that. And with what the impact to businesses are, we don't know if there's some businesses that are going to survive to that endpoint in December. So I would like to see us get that as soon as possible.
I believe Mr. Britton just said that the 27th isn't good, but the 28th and after would be okay. So if we want to do the 28th or the 29th?
I would rather wait till August 3 or into August, the beginning of August.
Okay, we have a meeting on the 4th, so obviously that might not be a good day.
August 2nd.
3rd would be a Monday. Do we want to do Monday?
August, that's the 3rd, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Are you guys okay with that? August 3? 6:30, we would have it here, the high school?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, just send us out an invite as you always do. Thank you. All right, next up is the Dominion Power Broadband Initiative Local Allocation Request. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris is going to bring up the slides. Thank you, Chris. Next slide. As the board is fully aware, King George County entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Northern Neck Electric Co-op, Dominion Power, and members of the Northern Neck communities, which includes Westmoreland, Northumberland, and Richmond County. The purpose of the MOU is to pursue what we're calling the Dominion Power Broadband Initiative. And the whole foundation of this initiative is to leverage utility right-of-way as a means to run broadband fiber throughout the county and expand our fiber network. By utilizing that right-of-way and expanding that fiber, we then will have the middle mile of our broadband infrastructure completed. And then from that middle mile infrastructure, we have also a member of the MOU, it's All Points Broadband, where they run the last mile to our customers that are disenfranchised or underserved with broadband service. So I attended the managers' meeting for the Dominion Power Broadband. Again, the managers' meeting is managed by the Northern Neck Plan and District Commission and is attended to by the county administrators of all the member localities. And during that meeting, we received the update. If you'll see this slide here, what was conveyed to us is interim milestones have been modified to account for delays in the DACD approval process. That was for the previous VATI grant that we received to help pay for the design of the fiber infrastructure. However, the overall planning process and feasibility study for Phase 1 remains on schedule. I just wanted to make sure that the board had a good understanding of the new dates for the completion of Phase 1. Next slide. Another update, Dominion Powers, as you all are aware, will have to seek a petition from the State Corporate Commission to actually gain the approval to utilize their power line right-of-way as a means to establish a fiber infrastructure. While Dominion Powers have multiple discussions with members of the board of the SEC, and they have actually been encouraged to accelerate the timeframe for submitting that SEC petition. What does that mean to King George County? That's actually good news because the sooner that they get a petition, obviously that means that the project matures faster and we start seeing fiber laid across King George County quicker than anticipated. To accommodate the needs for Dominion Power to, I mean, administrative needs, Dominion Power required to submit for the SEC petition have already been completed, which included designated a GIS contact, which of course, we have a GIS department in King George, so we made that link up. We provided them copies of all broadband surveys to include the one that was completed two years ago. In addition, we provided them our MetroCAST slash Atlantic Broadband Cable Agreement, just so they had a good understanding of all the different entities that are operating in King George, and other member localities provided that same information. In addition, we supported their petition. We are, I'm sorry, we are going to support their petition for the SEC. Next slide. So in addition to them pursuing the SEC petition, they have also asked for local allocation towards a VATI grant that they are going to pursue. The final application for this VATI grant has to be submitted no later than August 17, 2020. As you all are aware, the success of a VATI grant is really dependent on two things. Number one, there's regional participation, and then number two, local allocation goes a long way with gaining the approval for the VATI grant. So what Dominion Power is doing is actually pursuing a $14 million, $14.3 million project. $4 million for the VATI grant. All Points Broadband, Dominion Power, and the Northern Neck Electric Co-op is providing $9 million. And then they're asking for the member localities to provide a local cost match of $345,000, all bringing in for a total of $14.3 million. Next slide. So again, I just wanted to illustrate the makeup of the VATI application with 30% of the project coming from VATI funding, 60% coming from All Points Broadband and our utility partners, then 10% local match. One key takeaway is that if the board does decide to support the local allocation of $345,000, there's already been an understanding put in place with Dominion Power, Northern Neck, and All Points Broadband that no money from that approved local allocation will be given to All Points Broadband or utility companies until construction takes place in the county. Currently, and I'm sure Ms. Brenner has been there to tell you, construction is going to be somewhere around second or third quarter of next year. So right now, what we're asking for is the board basically to appropriate that funding and purpose it, but not a dollar will be spent until we do see construction and have a good confidence that the project is going to be completed. So since we aren't going to spend $1, what we're asking for is an approval from the board to meet that local allocation requirement and authorize the county administrator to write a letter of commitment by August 2020 or the end of this meeting. And then we'd also would capture that allocation in our CIP, and the board could then take a formal vote then as well to incorporate it and memorialize it in our CIP, and we think that that'll meet the requirements from the state for the VATI grant. Next slide. So again, I would recommend that we approve a letter. The board authorized the county administrator to write a letter of commitment pledging the monies to the Northern Neck Broadband VATI grant. However, there is an additional opportunity. Rather than approve an allocation, request allocation of $345,000, I believe there's an opportunity for us to increase our match and therefore increase our order of precedence for the construction. After having detailed discussions with some of our Northern Neck localities, I know that they are not as financially flush as King George County, and they're going to have a little bit of trouble meeting that local cost allocation. Since we do have the healthy fund balances to meet that requirement for such an important priority, what I would recommend is suggesting to those communities that, hey, we'll contribute a little bit more to the pot, but King George County is going to be the first to have its fiber network expanded. That was the initial discussion, and we didn't get much pushback from Westmoreland or from other localities, but I think that if we actually bring a real letter or a real commitment from the board of supervisors, we can get that memorialized, and that'll be the understanding that starting next year, the third quarter of 2021, I'm sorry, we actually will start seeing construction and it'll start up north and then work its way down to Northern Neck. Next slide. With that being said, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. I'll stand by for any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Dr. Young, for that presentation. Before I go through the questions that I contacted All Points Broadband and Mr. Ed Diggs from Dominion Power, I'll let my colleagues ask their questions. Does anybody have any questions?
About the presentation?
Any questions? Well, I had contacted Mr. Ed Diggs and the representative from All Points Broadband, and just so the public knows, I asked him quite a few questions, and they were very thorough in their answers. And I think it's a great, great opportunity with companies that have a reputation and they're, some of, two of them are electric providers that have their own power lines already established in the county. And I asked, well, first question, will you be using existing fire, power lines or need to lay new fiber cable for internet? They said that they plan to build the main line mid-mile along existing overhead electric distribution lines. On a rare occasion, we may need to build a short segment underground to complete a route. This would be the exception and not the rule. I asked them if they were going to cover all areas if asked. I gave my example, I live all 301, and people would assume that it's covered, but it is not. And he said, "The objective of the initiative is to provide broadband access to all locations that do not currently have access to a 253 service. It is an aspiration to do so using fiber to the home everywhere and is technically and financially feasible to do so. Ultimately, the extent of deployment in specific technology will depend on the outcome of the feasibility and planning process that is currently underway and a favorable SEC ruling on a petition that enables Dominion to construct sufficient middle-mile infrastructure to make the last mile viable." I asked them, "What is the potential cost?" They anticipate that the monthly fees for plans will start around $55, and the pricing will depend on the same two factors noted in the response to the question I just read. I asked them what the potential upload and download speed was and the location served. They said we'll have access to gigabyte speeds. What kind of equipment would they install or would the customers need to install? And they said for their locations, the customer's premises equipment will be very similar to what consumers that currently have cable internet service have at their locations. It consists of a wired connection from the street to the home, a small enclosure on the exterior of their house, similar to what is used today for phone service and our cable or internet, and an in-home wireless router that broadcasts a Wi-Fi signal throughout the home. What is the build-out timeline? Dr. Young had already previously stated, "The build-out timeline is entirely dependent on the SEC proceeding, including how long that process takes and what the SEC ultimately approves. Assuming the petition is submitted in the quarter three of 2020 and a favorable outcome is received, they anticipate construction will likely commence in quarter three or four of 2021. Complete build-out throughout the entire area covered by the initiative will take at least a year." And I asked them, "Would this would be a pilot program or a first-of-a-kind?" They said, "There is not many, but I know when I was at the NACO convention, they have been pushing, especially with our representatives at the federal and state level, of using the utilities to try to bring that fiber to the last mile in all those underserved areas in the United States that really need broadband internet service." And let me go back up to the top of my document because I asked them, "What's 253?", just so everybody knows what that means and it is. They will, hold on, I just got to find it. 253 means a broadband service that offers download speeds of 25 megabytes per second and upload speeds of 3 megabytes. This is the threshold that Virginia's Department of Housing and Community Development has established for determining whether a specific location is served or underserved by broadband. And then with that, I asked them, "What happens if the power goes out?" And they said, "If the power goes out, the underlying internet service won't necessarily go out. However, it may not be usable for most people since most consumers use a wireless router in their home to create and distribute their private Wi-Fi networks. If you can't power the wireless router, you can't have a Wi-Fi access." But I just thought people might ask that question, and those were all the answers. And that is it. Is there any more questions? Nope, okay. So do we have to have a motion on that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
For both pieces, the letter and the contribution?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve a letter of commitment to the Northern Neck Broadborn VATI grant.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you very much, Dr. Young, for bringing that to us.
I move to authorize the county administrator to negotiate a local contribution of $500,000 in order to secure a higher precedence in the construction timeline.
Friendly amendment, please.
Yes.
It was the exact language Dr. Young requested was not to exceed $500,000, please.
Apologies. I would like to make a motion to amend my previous motion to include the not to exceed Thank you, Ms. Kupka.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Hold on, apologize, withdraw, Ms. Kupka.
I'm sorry, I was trying to see if Mr. Stonehill had something and wanted to go first, but if you'll indulge me now at this point, I'm sorry, gentlemen, I apologize.
It's fine.
I just want to point out a few things, and well, it sounds like from what I kind of heard, my colleagues will support this, but I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke in support or submitted written correspondence. I want to note, Mr. Grego gave an address on Prim Road, which is in the Shiloh District. Ms. Foshee, while she currently has service, she lives in the James Madison District, and she didn't have to speak up for this, but she realizes how much our community needs this. Ms. Seek Lee lives in the Meadows, which I believe is in the James Monroe District. I myself live in the Dalgran District, and I also suffer from, I believe, being underserved. My children and their learning has suffered. I measured the download, upload speeds that you referenced, the 253 as being the definition. If you don't have that, you are underserved. And I measured that from inside my home over the weekend, and my download speed was 18. So we literally have citizens from every district in the county, countywide. This is not an issue just for one neighborhood. This is not an issue just for one area. This is countywide. I also want to remind everyone, as your grant writer, when I was on staff, I worked on that broadband planning survey that Dr. Young referenced. I attempted at one point to obtain a broadband of VATI grant for the county, and at that point in time, the board was not willing to allocate local match. I am glad, I am grateful, and I am proud, hopefully, that tonight this board is willing to do so. I want to read just a couple of things from the last call, the last week, last Friday, with Congressman Whitman, that he pointed out. Some school systems have bought tablets and hotspots, but if you have less than two bars, you cannot transmit data, which means your tablet is worthless. And another point, it's a misconception to somehow think that every student is going to have the ability to virtually learn because many of them aren't going to have the connection. So the need is real, the need is dire, especially given the current circumstances. And also, in the past, his broadband task force meetings have pointed out that VATI grants that are regional in approach, and this one is, offer the services of established providers, this one does, with infrastructure, as in the UTE. providers, this one does, with infrastructure, as in the utility poles and the lines in place, this one does, and the locality, localities must contribute to the match to show they have some skin in the game. So, again, I am grateful to all of you for even considering this. I'll close with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. So we have a motion. It was properly seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone who worked on this. All right. Hold on a second. Next up, we have a public hearing. First public hearing. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold two public hearings, which have been properly advertised, to receive public input. The first public hearing is case number 2001-Z01, Amendments to the King George County Zoning Ordinance to Revise the Sign Regulations, Amendments to Section 3.11. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on information received during public comment. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Lewis Pankotti, planner, and I will be presenting case number 20-01-Z01, Amendments to the King George County Zoning Ordinance to Revise Sign Regulations, Amendment to Section 3.11. Next slide, please. At its September 3, 2019, meeting, the King George County Board of Supervisors requested that the Planning Commission review Section 3.11 sign regulations of the zoning ordinance. Also, in 2015, the United States Supreme Court ruled in Reed v. Town of Gilbert that localities cannot regulate the content of signs. Any content-based regulations were deemed unconstitutional. Other characteristics of a sign, such as size, placement, type, can be regulated. Also, the current ordinance does not allow for signage on properties where commercial activity is not taking place, even if that property is owned by the business operator. There is also interest in making the sign ordinance more comprehensive. This draft update adds provisions for off-site signs, revises regulations to make them content-neutral, reorganizes Section 3.11 to be more comprehensive. Next slide, please. So Section 3.11 is the section of the ordinance that regulates signs. 3.11.2 is now revised to define a permitted sign as any object, device, display, or structure or part thereof visible from a public place, a public right-of-way, any parking area or right-of-way, open to use by the general public, or any navigable body of water which is designed to be used to attract attention to an institution, organization, business, product, service, event, or location by any means involving words, letters, figures, designs, symbols, fixtures, logos, colors, illumination, or projected images are allowed in all districts per the requirements below, but such signs shall not be erected in any residential lot. Permitted signs may be internally illuminated or externally illuminated unless otherwise specified. Illuminated signs shall be dark sky compliant. Next page, please. Section 3.11.1.2 lays out the size and size, location, and types of signs permitted in each zoning district. I will not go into each provision as the content in this section remain mostly the same. What's on the screen just shows the headings for the sections were reorganized. Next slide. The following provisions, however, were deleted because they were not content-neutral. So roadside produce stands will now fall under permitted signs in agricultural districts, described as a freestanding sign, supported by structures or supports that are placed on or anchored to the ground and are independent from building or other structure. Only one such sign shall be allowed on any street frontage, and no sign chucks, 50 square feet in area. Window signs and direction signs are now moved to exempt signs. Section 3.11.3 will be the... Next slide, please, sorry. So Section 3.11.3 will be a new section that permits off-site signs. Currently, our ordinance does not allow off-site signs. This section allows for off-premise signage, defined as a permanent sign that directs attention to a business, product, service, or activity conducted, sold, or offered at a location other than the premise on which the sign is erected, will be permitted on properties contiguous to the property where the activity is taking place, only if the contiguous property is owned by the same owner or operator of the business. One 32-square-foot off-site sign shall be permitted, and a sign permit is required. Next slide, please. Section 3.11.4 exempted for permit. These signs can be erected without a permit. This section was moved ahead of prohibited signs. Most of these regulations were revised to be content-neutral. Provision C is intended to replace what was called warning slash security signs and directional signs. Next slide, please. Here's a continuation of exempted signs, which include permanent signs where lots are offered, or non-permanent signs where lots are offered for seller lease, the changing of bulletin boards, and permanent banner signs on the building face. Next slide, please. And here are provisions for temporary banners for new businesses and also event signs. Provisions for auction signs are removed, as they were not content-neutral, and would now fall under special event signs. Therefore, these signs would no longer be able to erected off-site, but can be bigger than the previous restriction of four square feet. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, the specific references and regulations for auction signs and security signs have been removed. Next, please. Then, next section outlines the signs that are prohibited. This section prohibits moving signs, explodes light fixtures, signs that obscure traffic signs. Not much has changed in this section, except for Provision B of the current ordinance did not include content-based recreation, saying that it should not apply to digital displays of date, time, temperature, weather, environmental conditions, or other off-site on-business information, with messages displayed at intervals of at least 10 seconds. So those content-based references have been removed. Next slide, please. This section also prohibits signs that present a danger to the public and signs that violate state law. Next slide, please. The following sections remained unchanged by this update, heightened setback requirements for permitted sign, measurement of sign area, placement of signs, unsafe and/or unlawful signs, and non-conforming signs. Next slide, please. Finally, at its February 11, 2020, meeting, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the text amendment to the Board of Supervisors by a vote of eight to one. The Department of Community Development and the Planning Commission therefore recommends that the King George County Board of Supervisors approve case number 20-01-Z01, Amendments to the King George County Zoning Ordinance to Revise Sign Regulations, Amendment to Sections 3.11. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Or turn it over to a public comment. Do you guys have any questions? No question? Thank you so much for your presentation. Always very thorough. Thank you. Do I have anybody from the public who would like to come up and give public comment? Please come to the podium.
I own Exit Realty Expertise, and I'll give a handout, so you can follow along if you'd like. The Board of Supervisors is in the process of updating the sign ordinance. I'm in the process of relocating my company, Exit Realty Expertise, to the vacant building at 9441 Kings Highway, which is almost next door to the courthouse. It's the old bank post office building that was built in 1956. I'm doing a great amount of work to the building, and I think it will be a refreshing upgrade for the downtown King George courthouse area, something I think all citizens will be proud of. As part of my plan, I'm looking to invest in a digital sign. These signs are very expensive, with an acquisition cost, on average, of between $20,000 and $40,000, depending on the sharpness of the screens. I'm getting the state-of-the-art 6-millimeter. Obviously, with such an expense, I would hope to get as much quality use out of it as possible. I plan on using to not only promote my business and my agents, but to promote community events as well, things such as the Builders Home and Craft Show, Fall Festival, Remember to Vote, Amber Alerts, and more. One of my concerns with the proposed sign ordinance is the requirement that the screen can only change at a minimum of every 10 seconds. At that rate, anyone traveling through the courthouse area will only see one message on the sign. I might as well put up a stationary sign. The 10-second rule is two-and-a-half times longer requirement than VDOT's state sign requirement of four seconds. I cited the code there. It goes onto the second page, the applicable part, where it speaks about messages that change no more than once every four seconds. And that's consistent with the agreement entered into between the Commissioner of Highways and the U.S. Department of Transportation. I have no idea what the justification is for King George mandating 10 seconds instead of four. Kind of defeats the purpose of having a digital sign. I respectfully request that the county ordinance change to match the state. Existing digital signs throughout the county seem to change in the four-to-five-second range, as I've observed. To my knowledge, there's never been an issue as a result. Please make our sign ordinance a recruiting tool for businesses to locate in King George, not a hindrance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Does anybody else have, want to give public comment? Do we have anybody online that would like to give? Do we have any public correspondents that sent to any of us? All right. I will close public comment right now. Do I have any discussion in the board or questions?
Yes. Mr. Butler, thank you for coming out and speaking. I would ask, does Community Development know why the proposed 10-second was forwarded forth as the recommendation?
So that is what the current ordinance says?
Okay.
That particular provision wasn't in the scope of what we were changing for this amendment?
Okay.
I did do some research into it, and I will share that with you. I looked at 19 surrounding counties and came up with an average of the ones that did have an interval requirement similar to us, and the average came out to be 22.9 seconds. But that average does include two outliers, Powhatan, which requires three minutes, and Goochlin, which requires 60 seconds. So without those two outliers, the average still comes out to 11.4, with a range of four to 30 seconds.
How many localities did you look at?
19 in total.
Out of those 19, how many were faster than 10 seconds?
I'm sorry. Can you say that again? Did you say nine or nine?
Nine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's the only questions I have about that. If anyone else has any other questions, I'll let you ask first before continuing on discussion.
Mr. Stone, did you have one?
The sign at Company 1, it seems to kind of go quicker than I would have thought, 10 seconds, but I guess that has to be 10 seconds?
It should be 10 seconds. We operate on complaint basis for zoning violations, so that has not been brought to our attention.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I'm just sitting at that traffic light, just seeing the weather and things scroll through, and it just seemed quicker than that, but I've never measured it, so.
But as the ordinance stands now, the requirement is 10 seconds, and that would be the same as the proposed ordinance.
Ms. Kupka?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Butler, thank you very much for coming out tonight. Thank you for your comment. I actually had forwarded much of what you had sent earlier to Mr. Britton. So, Mr. Britton, could you provide us with some guidance with regard to Mr. Butler's request, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so this, all that was on tonight, and it's been for a long time, was to change that you couldn't have a sign off your own property, or that you couldn't have, if you had one on your own property, you couldn't have it on the contiguous property. So when Ms. Kupka forwarded Mr. Butler's concern, I got with Community Development, they were well aware of it, well aware of the digital sign ordinance. I'm well aware of digital sign ordinances and the various things, and we are looking into it. That's the preliminary. But what we decided to do was to go ahead and not off-road something that was already in the viewfinder, and to get that problem solved, because this is a comprehensive issue. Why is it that they have any? Why is it that it's not 10 minutes, four seconds, six seconds? VDOT has one. Some counties have minutes, some county, you know. So what is, what they call them, warrants? What warrants those? Is it the number of accidents? Is it distraction at night? I'm not sure. So we, we're going to work together to get a reason, something that we could say it should be five seconds or four seconds, but have a reason for it. Part of that is comparables, which you heard Lewis give you some of, and we're working on it. So we're going to come back with a revamp of the digital sign ordinance. The other thing that I spoke with Ms. Kupka about was just the change rate is just one part of a robust and competent digital sign ordinance. There are a lot of parts to it. So we are going to present a proposed, updated, modern sign ordinance at that time, taking into account, of course, what Mr. Butler and others said, reach out to the community, find out what signs they are, maybe that's something tech could do, since they have, that was a tourism committee joke. And so we will get a full report, working together, as to what's legal, what are best practices for drafting, why it is, why it warrants. There's also, I don't know what, but how bright it is, lumens or luminosity, or there's complicated words for it, but how bright it is, and all of those things should be addressed. Light pollution ordinance, we have to make sure it doesn't conflict with that. So that's why we're just doing this little one now. We just weren't ready.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Mr. Bush, you have a question?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Apologize.
I had one more. Thank you for that, Mr. Britton. One more question, and it is, so without naming any names, so would this then, what would this do to nonprofits who have signs on the side of the road advertising their events, but it's not on property that they own or contiguous? So there's one at the intersection of 205 and Route 3, and the same one has another sign at the intersection of Route 3 and 301. And so are they not going to be able to have those signs there, you know, because it's talking about the owned property and the contiguous property?
My understanding is those signs aren't allowed to be there currently.
Right.
And so, but based on the fact that it's a complaint-based policing effort, I guess no one's complained about this, would be my guess.
Understood. Thank you.
Right. This would not affect that. This would make it easier to do things like that, you couldn't have any off-site and contiguous of owned, dubious property. But as I've said before and other things, there's two types. There's policing-based, and there's complaint-based. So if you're, I'll pick a county Fairfax, presumably you have a team of people who drive around and find sign violations and other violations, and you cite them. We're complaint-based, for obvious reasons, and we get a complaint, we cite it. I'm not sure of the one that you're, but this wouldn't affect it, but it wouldn't solve it either. So if a, and the question I don't know, but I think that Mr. Lewis can answer, is if you own a non-contiguous piece of property, I don't think that's included either.
It would not be.
Right. So if you have a church or a business, and then you own, that business owns just a random piece of property, they can't choose to put it on that sign either. It has to be on their property and/or contiguous. So we didn't address that problem. We could bring it up at the digital sign ordinance part.
Yes, if we could look at it going forward, when you make further revisions, I'd appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Do you have any more? That was awesome. Thank you. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Butler, thank you for coming out tonight. I have a couple of things. First, I'm not a- First, I'm not a fan of ordinances in general. I don't like government restricting use of property that people own. I do understand that there's physical hazards and blinding, like when we're talking about the digital sign, but I think at some point, somebody put an arbitrary number of 10 seconds up, and it just stuck. It doesn't sound like there was any basis for anything. If there's guidance from VDOT or from the state, then I don't see why we would exceed that minimum on that. I don't like the fact that it's police versus complaint monitored. You can have one business that just, someone wants to troll them, and they're going to be calling Community Development or Dr. Young's office five times a day about somebody's sign, but down the street, there's a sign there, and nobody's complaining about it. I think that's an issue. I just, I don't see this as equitable. I think at the bottom, at the end of the day, if someone has property, and they own it, and they let someone put up a sign, and it's not a hazard to someone's visibility of the road, or it's not blinding, it's not a height restriction or those concerns, let them put the sign up. That's my opinion. I think we're getting too far into, there's a point of regulating, regulation and a point of overregulation. That's my two cents. But I do appreciate everybody's time and effort into this. It is a better product than what we had initially, so thank you.
Mr. Granger, you have one? I thank you, Mr. Britton. I thank you, Mr. Butler, for coming out and giving, I know you've talked to me personally about this, and I know it's very important to be able to advertise your business, and as am I understanding, when you came on board, Mr. Britton, you're going to be looking at all of our ordinance to make them more robust and to update them, and that the sign ordinance will be tweaked even more and updated to 2020 standards. Is that correct?
Yes, and hopefully with digital signs, the good part is, you know, you can program them for whatever it is, and then the ordinance changes, and you can reprogram. There may be some cost to it, but hopefully that's one of the ways, a lot easier than a physical one. Yes, we're going through them, we're looking at proffers and zoning, and as you know, and one by one as they come up. The public comment helps, and when we redo the zoning ordinance, comments like, any board can give the input, obviously, and we can make any of those changes that you see fit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Britton. So what say you, Board?
I move to approve case number 20-TAC01-TACZ01, Amendments to the King George County's Zoning Ordinance to Revise the Sign Regulations as Presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Public Hearing Number Two. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold its second public hearing to receive input regarding case number 19-12-S01, Amendment to the King George County Subdivision Ordinance to Comply with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act as Recommended by the Department of Environmental Quality, Amendment to Sections 1.4, 3.9, 6.2, and 7.1. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to... ...anyone who needs to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on information received during public comment. Ms. Hall?
Good evening. As an introduction to this next text amendment, I wanted to take the opportunity to advise the board that this past year, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality has conducted a review of King George County's Chesapeake Bay Program Review. A review was conducted for King George County, January 2019 through October 2019. This compliance review required a full evaluation of our permitting files, staff site plans, division plats, site inspections, as well as evaluation of our zoning and subdivision ordinances, Community Development's procedures, and comprehensive plan. November 6, 2019, a review letter proposed three conditions for compliance, which is attached. The conditions included a follow-up to the responses received from the 2019 Septic Pumped-Out Program Letter and two minor text amendments requiring updated language. On June 18, 2020, King George County received the attached approval letter of our program, which found King George County Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act program to be compliant. I'd like to thank the entire staff of Community Development, as it was a lot of work, a year-long process, and on top of our already very heavy workload this past year. With that being said, Lewis will move forward with the text amendment.
I will now present case number 19-12-S01, Amendment to King George County Subdivision Ordinance to Comply with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act as Recommended by the Department of Environmental Quality, Amendment to Sections 1.4, 3.9, 6.2, and 7.1. Next slide, please. So on November 6, 2019, DEQ issued a compliance review to, of the King George County's Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act program with recommended conditions, as Ms. Hall just stated. Recommended condition number three holds that the county should require the following notes on all plats prior to approval. One, undisturbed and vegetated, 100-foot-wide RPA buffer areas are to be retained. Two, onsite septic systems are to be pumped out every five years. 100% reserved rainfields are required for onsite septic system. Our ordinance currently does comply with that condition. And permitted development in RPAs is limited to water-dependent facilities or redevelopment. It was recommended that this exact language be adopted and required on all plats prior to approval. Text amendments to the subdivision ordinance are needed for the change in language. Next slide, please. Section 1.4 outlines the requirements for exempt subdivisions. That would include things such as boundary line adjustments. Section 3.9 outlines the requirements for major subdivisions. Section 6.2 outlines the requirements for minor subdivisions. And finally, section 7.1 outlines the requirements for family subdivisions. All four sections will need to be amended, as they all include the same language regarding the required notes. As you can see here, the exact language recommended by DEQ will replace the old verbiage. Next slide, please. Finally, on March 10, 2020, the King George County Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward the, to forward case number 19-12-S01 with edits to the Board of Supervisors with your recommendation for approval. The Department of Community Development staff and Planning Commission recommend that the King George County Board of Supervisors approve case number 19-12-S01, Amendment to the King George County Subdivision Ordinance to Comply with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act as Recommended by the Department of Environmental Quality, Amendment to Sections 1.4, 3.9, 6.2, and 7.1. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you very much for your thorough presentation, once again. Do we have any members of the public who would like to give comment? Do we have anybody online? Any written correspondence? Okay. No more questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve case number 19-TAC12-TACZ01, Amendment to the King George County Subdivision Ordinance to Comply with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act as Recommended by the Department of Environmental Quality, Amendment to Sections 1.4, 3.9, 6.2, and 7.1 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Hold on one second. All right. Public Hearing Number Three. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold its third public hearing to receive input on the amendment of the FY 2021 budget to accept the CARES Act funding. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on information received during the comment. First up is our staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On May 12, 2020, King George County was notified that the federal CARES Act funding for our community would total $2,341,338. A fund titled the CARES Fund was established in the county administration to track expenses related to COVID-19. We recommend the Board of Supervisors amend the fiscal year 2021 budget to accept the federal CARES Act funding and appropriate $2,341,338 to the CARES Fund.
All right. Do we have any public comment? Anybody online? Any written correspondence to board members? All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the amendment to the FY 2021 budget to accept the federal CARES Act funding and appropriate $2,341,338 to the CARES Fund.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, contract with Finley Asphalt and Ceiling Incorporated for the KG Middle School Turn Lane Project.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Levita Cobb on behalf of Department of Finance. So back in 2018, the county applied for and received $158,000 in revenue sharing funds for the construction of the King George Middle School Turn Lane. And at its meeting on October 2, 2018, the Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute and submit appropriate documents associated with the project. The county's budget for that project back in 2018 was estimated to be $398,000, which included the revenue sharing of $158,000 from VDOT and $240,000 from the middle school project bond. The project budget included construction, contingency, and construction administration and materials testing. In May 2019, bids were received for the project, but at that time, we only received one bid in the amount of $531,000. And as there was only one bid, we decided to, and it was significantly over budget, we rejected that bid and rebid the project in spring of 2020. In March of 2020, the project was bid for a second time. Four bids were received and ranged from a low of $533,354 to a high of $709,000. Again, because the low bid was significantly over budget, the decision was made to reject the bid at that time and then communicate with VDOT to discuss options for cost or cost reduction or scope of work reduction. So after several discussions with VDOT, it was decided that the project would be separated into two phases. The first phase would be the right turn lane portion of the project, and then the second phase would be the left turn lane portion of the project. The existing revenue sharing funds would be allocated solely to Phase One, and the county would apply for revenue sharing funds during the next cycle for Phase Two funding. Bids were received for Phase One on June 10, 2020. We received five bids, and they ranged from a low of $315,186.16 to a high of $402,429. The project was bid with a base bid and three alternate bid items, but due to the cost, the alternate bid items were rejected, and they were also associated with Phase Two. Mr. Dan Sutton with Wiley Wilson, he's completed a review of Finley Asphalt and Ceiling, of their bid and qualifications, and he has determined that Finley Asphalt and Ceiling is a qualified, responsible, and responsive contractor. So I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Finley Asphalt and Ceiling for the King George Middle School Turn Lane Project Phase One base bid in the amount of $315,186.16, and authorize the county administrator to execute a construction agreement with Finley Asphalt and Ceiling, subject to approval of the construction agreement as informed by the county attorney. Furthermore, I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize $158,000 to be paid from the general fund balance and the remaining $157,186.16 to be paid from the previously appropriated middle school project budget fund. As this is a revenue sharing project, the county will be reimbursed the approved amount of $158,000 upon completion of the project. And then lastly, also, this is a locality administer project, and the county engineer, engineer, sorry, Mr. Travis Cusenberry, has been approved by VDOT as meeting the requirements for serving as the local government responsible person.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the county administrator to issue a contract to Finley Asphalt and Ceiling Incorporated in the amount of $315,186.16 for construction of Phase One of the King George Middle School Turn Lane Project as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I assume we'll want to move forward trying to do Phase Two and getting some revenue sharing as well in the next round. I assume the rest of the board would be on board with that.
Yes, for safety.
Yes, okay.
So we have a motion properly seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cupka.
Thank you.
Next up, the Department of Community Development, case numbers 1912-E02, Special Exception Permit Request for an Event Venue, Back Porch Vineyard, owned by Spillman-Wilmot LLC, Sherry Spillman, Tax MAP 41, Parcel 36D, 40.84 acre Zone A1 Limited Agricultural District, 20 acres designated for the event venue.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a special exception request for an event venue, as previously stated, for Back Porch Vineyard. Back Porch Vineyard is an agriculturally exempt Virginia farm winery submitted an application become an event venue, as described in Section 4.14 of King George County zoning ordinance. The application includes an existing barn, grass parking, portable restrooms, and proposes more than 24 events, no more than 24 events in a calendar year. The recommended options tonight is either forward this case to the Planning Commission and to hold a public hearing with a recommendation, or option two is to schedule a public hearing with the Board of Supervisors to hear the case. The applicant has provided a letter, which was provided in your packet, asking the board to retain this request and hold a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Does anybody have any questions?
Also, the applicants here, if you have any questions.
I see them out there in the audience. Both of them. Thank you. Both applicants, I see in the audience. Do we have any questions specifically for the applicants? Ms. Cupka?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions specifically. I know they submitted a letter or a statement. Are they afforded an opportunity to speak if they so choose? Is that, Mr. Britton, are we allowed to do that?
That is correct, Madam Chair. I mean, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's correct, Vice Chair. You all can invite them up to speak if the board so pleases.
Would you like to come up and afford you a moment up to the podium? If you choose not to, you don't have to.
I think our letter pretty much works itself, and we're looking at the process.
Do you guys have any questions? Thank you very much. My only question, and I'm going to be honest, because I try to be fair, and I love both of the ideas. I'm a big proponent, especially when I've seen numerous presentations about how vital sports tourism and agro-tourism is to areas that want to stay rural. But the only thing, and I know I was a stickler last October, about making sure that it runs through the proper process and go to the Planning Commission and into the Board of Supervisors instead of jumping over it. So that is, that is my only thing. I love both projects, but I want to make sure we follow the process, and that is my only comment, is following the process.
Madam Chair, I think that's a wise comment. I was a part of that board that made that decision. I think it probably should have gone through the process, and we shouldn't have made any special exceptions, looking back, hindsight being 2020. I appreciate where you're coming from, that you would like to expedite it, but I would really like to try to follow the process and be as consistent as possible so everyone has the same, the same playing field.
I agree.
Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
Madam Chair, I understand where all of you are coming from. I just want to state that from an economic development and tourism... I just want to state that from an economic development and tourism perspective, which is where I came from on your staff, this is wedding season, this is winery season. I know this is not the only one here. We have another applicant for a special exception permit for a venue right after this one. I do understand, I appreciate where you all are coming from with regard to following the system, the procedure in place. I just, through no fault of their own, these applicants have been put off, I feel like, for a very long time, and it's not the fault of our staff. It's because we made a conscious decision to suspend public hearings several months ago. So I want to apologize to you all personally for that. That's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and I'm in full in support of these businesses. I just, I know I made a big deal about it in October, so I will continue to follow what I feel is the proper way, but that is my opinion. I could be outvoted, but I find they're vital businesses, and if we want to keep our rural character, we need to promote those kind of businesses. But I'm going to stick to the statements I have made, and I will not go back on my statements that I made.
Madam Chair, if I may, I agree with Ms. Kupka and with, I agree with Mr. Granger and you. We, the process is very important. However, I am going to say one thing that is going to be contrary to the process, so I'm going to sound like a hypocrite. Tonight, we're going to make another declaration of emergency in King George County. Economically, we are suffering. We need to find some kind of way to stimulate businesses by delaying the process for two businesses that we know are viable. And being that the planning commission offers a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, but ultimately, we make the decision. We have two businesses that, in the coming months, the delay with COVID and the things going on could cause those businesses not to manifest. It could cause them significant financial hardship, which a lot of our businesses are going through right now. We're losing businesses in King George County, and we got two people that want to build a business. If this wasn't the situation where we're going to declare an emergency tonight for economic reasons, I don't see why we can't, at a minimum, maybe hold a joint meeting. If we want, I really do have conflict by passing over the planning commission that it wants. I said I'm never going to do that again. We know how that turned out, but where we might need to. I would like to entertain maybe a joint public hearing with the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Bush, I agree with you. I mean, I'm open to whatever the vote falls, what may, and every, any motion that is made. I mean, one of the applicants, the one we're talking about right now, is in my district, and they're good folks, and the other applicant are good folks, and they've gone through the process right, and do it to the COVID bug that appeared, they would be further along in this. But I have to stand by the morals that I set and the standards that I set, but I can be outvoted, and that's all I have to say. I made a big deal about it the first time. I at least have to stand on my principles of going through the process and not passing over, but that's just, that's just one vote. So, for my board, whatever you would like. Make a motion.
All right, I guess I would like to make a motion to hold a joint planning commission Board of Supervisors public hearing for Back Porch. Is that motion correct? Well, he came to tell us.
I would say to follow the language there and just say, change it for the, Dr. Young, your advice on that?
Yes, I too. That's what I advise, sir. If that's the motion that you want to make, I'd advise that you recommend a joint public hearing between the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors to consider, to consider a special exception permit for event venue backyard, Back Porch Vineyard, owned by Spillman-Wilmot LLC, Sherry Spillman, tax map 41 parcel 36D, 40.84 acres, zone A1, limited agricultural district, 20 acres designated for the event venue.
Can I say so moved?
Yeah, you would say so moved.
Yes, I was just, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
My only question would be, I do remember we did this once before, and the board never got the opportunity to weigh in. It was a regular planning commission meeting, and so there's other business that they have going on, and so it can be challenging with the planning commission performing their part of it and then having to stop to allow the board to then do their part of it and then to go back and then finish up the rest of their meeting.
But as I remember, I mean, one of our challenges, Ms. Hall has now done a very good job of shortening her presentation, but she always has a good presentation, and also, we can go past midnight if we vote to choose to go past midnight.
Four or five.
Yes. So, I mean, those are options that we can do, and I don't see either of these as being very controversial. I might be wrong, but.
I would imagine less controversial, at least. I think that's, that is a fair point.
If I may interject, I would recommend holding it on a separate night. Our agenda for the August meeting is very full. If you hold a joint meeting, we could certainly have a special meeting on a separate night. I believe that both of these projects are straightforward. We haven't received any complaints from the neighbors. They seem to have all the preliminary in order. So if you do choose to do a joint meeting, I would recommend not doing it on the regularly scheduled planning commission meetings. We're pretty full for August.
So what we can do is have a special meeting and include both of them on there and have a joint meeting?
Yes.
Just for those two.
Do we have a venue big enough for both groups?
I would assume this venue.
This is our only venue, I believe.
This is our biggest venue.
And sir, if that was the case, the staff will work to, probably look at opening up the curtains and making other justice work to accommodate such a large meeting.
Do we have to amend that amendment for that?
No, Madam Chair, because you're just asking.
Okay.
Or a motion to entertain a joint meeting between the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors.
That will be scheduled at a later point.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, we have it properly seconded. Any more discussion?
So it would be scheduled at a later point. I'm sorry, I just would like to make sure we hammer this out before, because I would hate for it to end up taking longer to go through this process to make a coordinated meeting than to just have each individual meeting. So I would, I would almost like to propose some dates, you know, now, to the planning commission and see which one of those dates might be the best for them, so that we can kind of already know, hey, we have a plan going forth.
That's.
And then authorize them to, the staff to advertise the public hearing to, based off that feedback.
Dr. Young, do you have some dates right now that are available or possible?
Yes, Madam Chair. Give me one second.
Ms. Hall, I think, has some also.
Just to keep in mind, we do have a notification process of 20 days in advance, as well as our two weeks of advertisement, so I would recommend a middle of August.
We have the Board of Supervisor meeting on the 18th. So I would suggest 17th or 19th. It'd be basically a back-to-back meeting week, but I think that that would be accommodating.
I would, any day that week, I would be amenable to, if we want to try to give them as many as possible. It'd be a Wednesday.
19th is a Wednesday, sir. Okay.
That's fine.
But I'll leave the rest of the board to.
Do we want to have a backup date, just in case planning commission can't get a quorum on that night?
That's what I was trying to say, the whole week.
Like the whole week.
That's what I'm saying, but I don't want to speak for the rest of the board.
The week of the 17th?
Yeah, I can make any of those days work.
Mr. Stonehill said okay with you.
Hopefully, we would be able to get a quorum.
I will make any of those days work if we can make this happen for these applicants, both of them.
And is it possible we can move it up to, let's say, 5:30, just in case, like Mr. Granger brought up that midnight deadline?
Yes. Does anybody have a problem with 5:30?
Again, based off the planning commission and quorum, I would be fine with that, but if it has to go to 6:30, that's fine with me as well. That's the only thing I'd say.
I know that some of my planning commission members work out of town, but with COVID-19, they might be a little more local these days, so I will try and facilitate that.
Okay. If it can, then everyone would be okay with 6:30 still. Okay. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I have to say nay, just because I'm going to follow what I said. So, motion carries. Next up, hold on. Department of Community Development, case number 0202E01, special exception permit request.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, ma'am. Yeah, oh, okay. Disregard, Madam Chair. Disregard, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Department of Community Development, case number 2002E01, special exception permit request for an event venue, Landino Barn, owned by Alfred and Mary Landino, tax map 26 parcel 30, that's 36, 55.13 acres, zoned A2, limited agricultural district, 21 acres designated for the event venue. Ms. Hall.
This one is very similar to the last one you just heard. The Landino Barn applied to become an event venue, as described in Section 4.14 of the King George County zoning ordinance. The application includes an existing barn, grass parking, portable restrooms, and proposes no more than 24 events per calendar year. You have two options again tonight, whether to forward or retain the motion. The applicant has provided a letter requesting that the board retain that application, which was included in your packet.
Do we have any questions concerning? Yes.
And the applicant, is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm sure the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Mr. Landino, would you like to come up and say anything? You can come right up and talk to us.
Good to be here. I guess we came to bypass a step I thought we were going to take anyways with the planning commission. It's been a while, I guess we've been going at it for, what, a year and a half? We had some problems getting paperwork going with the day deputy had to cancel on us, so, and we are an active venue, so we haven't really, you probably know that. So we haven't had any events this year, may not have any events this year, as we've been losing them in the fall already, so, and it's not a big deal, you know, so if it has to go to planning commission, we're okay with it. I'll say that. You know, whatever is good for you is good for me. We're not going to contest anything, you know, so, and we're really not really, we're not like the other venues, I guess, we're not, we don't really advertise, we've been kind of doing it as a, if somebody calls us, people we know, and we're going to continue to be that way, you know, just a place, you know, so we're not going to be full commercial like most of them are. I guess, you have any questions for me or us?
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't, I, well, I guess I'll just ask, I assume you'd be, find the joint meeting satisfactory.
Oh, I'm fine, that's fine, yeah.
You're just looking to shorten the timeframe, it's not, the planning commission's problem.
That's fine, anytime's fine. I'm not sure you're talking about the big crowd. I don't think it's going to be a big crowd, because I think it's going to be rather small. My neighbors are all on board with us, you know, they've actually had three or four weddings from our neighbors, recommended, so they're all pretty, we try to keep it quiet and over by 10, you know, as the rules. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So, but that's, yeah, so I'm fine with anything you guys want to do.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to schedule a public hearing for a joint meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission during the week of the 17th to be decided for case number 20 tac 02 tac E01, special exception permit request for an event venue, Landino Barn.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes nay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Landino. All right, next up, discussion item, Dr. Young, declaration of emergency.
Yes, Madam Chair. As the board is fully aware, we're under, currently under a local declaration of emergency, which is set to expire on July 16th. There is a process where the emergency manager, the county administrator, could re-declare and then have it affirmed by the board at a subsequent Board of Supervisor meeting, but seeing that this one was expiring with, I mean, this meeting was two days right before the expiration of the meeting, I felt that it would be prudent, bring the declaration before the board, and instead of affirming a local declaration, I would like to request that the board re-declare a local emergency. The statement that I'm asking for you all to re-declare is a little bit different than what's currently contained in your board packet. That is a result of some feedback that I have received from some members of the board and from the county attorney. So if you would please afford me the opportunity, Madam Chair, I'd just like to read the revised local emergency and recommend that it be approved as presented.
Go right ahead.
At the, a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of King George County, Virginia, held at the King George High School on July 14th, 2020, the following declaration was consented to, confirmed, and adopted, declaring a local emergency to exist in King George County, Virginia. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of the County of King George, Virginia, or defines that COVID-19 constitutes a continuing real and substantial threat to public health and safety and constitutes a disaster and/or major disaster, as defined by Virginia Code 44-146.16, being a communicable disease, a public health threat, and that on March 16th, 2020, the local director of emergency management declared a local emergency in King George County, which was confirmed on March 17th, 2020, by the board, and that on April 16th, 2020, declaration of local emergency was extended through May 15th, 2020, and that on May 15th, 2020, the declaration of local emergency was extended through June 15th, 2020, and that on June 16th, 2020, the declaration of local emergency was extended through July 16th, 2020. That the local emergency and disaster is and will continue and poses a threat to actual occurrence of an emergency and disaster, which is of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant coordinated local government action to prevent or alleviate the damage, loss, hardship, or suffering, and that the county administrator of the County of King George, acting in his capacity as the local director of emergency management, recommends that the board consent, confirm, and declare a continuing local emergency pursuant to the Commonwealth of Virginia's Emergency Services and Disaster Law, Virginia Code 44-146.13. Now therefore, it is hereby declared by the Board of Supervisors of the County of King George, Virginia, that a local emergency exists and continues to exist through the County of King George, Virginia, and it is further declared and ordered that during the existence of this emergency, the powers, functions, and duties of the director of emergency management and the emergency management organizations and the functions of the County of King George are those prescribed by the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the ordinances, resolutions, and approved plans of the County of King George in order to mitigate the effects of said emergency. This state of local emergency shall end when this condition of peril has abated or at midnight on August 14th, 2020. Signed, the Board of Supervisors. August 18th. August 18th, 2020. Signed, the Board of Supervisors of King George County, Virginia.
I move to re-approve the, re-approve and adopt the declaration of emergency as read by Dr. Young.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
I would like to thank Dr. Young and Mr. Britton for the amendment to the language and for my colleagues for entertaining this. Previously, I had opposed the declarations of emergency because of specific language that was in here, but understanding this is a financial tool that we really need to use and that I understood the meaning of it, I asked that the specific language that I found misleading to be removed, and it has. One thing I do want to make clear to my constituents and to those who have understood why I was opposed to this declaration, this declaration is local in nature. This does not impact the governor and his direction of what phase we in King George will be under, or the state. We understand that there are. We understand that there are families that have continued to get a paycheck, that telework, and everything's fine, they're getting paid. But there's another demographic in this county that hasn't gotten a paycheck in three months and can't pay their rent, grocery shop. There is a financial hardship. But this declaration does nothing for the latter. Okay? This declaration is simply a financial tool to help expedite the process for the county administrator to enter into contracts and procurement. This does nothing to address those other concerns, and this does not impact the governor and, and what phase we're under. So with the language, thank you to everyone. I'll be able to support this declaration this evening.
So we have a motion, it's properly seconded. Any more discussion? Ms. Kupka?
Madam Chair, thank you. I would just point out a couple of things. Dr. Williams from Virginia Department of Health, also on that call with Congressman Whitman on Friday, stated, "This is a disease of lagging indicators. It takes several days, up to a week, to get sick enough to be hospitalized. So what we see today is really the result of what happened two weeks ago." And I say this because if you all followed the newspaper over the weekend, our neighbor, Du East Westmoreland County, had a huge increase over the weekend in cases. I think it's wise of us, whether you view this as a financial tool, as I do, or not, to reinstitute the state of emergency. I would point out that we have a number of county employees on our staff who live in Westmoreland County. So if there is spread in their community, eventually perhaps it could impact our staff's ability to properly function. I also would point out, while today there were zero high PPE calls, when Dr. Young shared the COVID internal dashboard with us yesterday, I believe there were 10 calls run by the fire department, and five of them, 50% of the calls, our, our fire rescue is, ran yesterday, ran yesterday, required PP, high PPE calls. So I would reiterate my support for this. Like I said, I view this as a financial tool, but, but there are still people out there who are sick and, and suffering because of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any more discussion? So we have a motion properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays, chair votes aye, motion carries.
And Madam Chair, we were sort of amending this on the fly. I realize that the footer has, May 14th, I, when it is published, it'll say July 14th.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Young, county administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, the Community Development Department always leaves as they do their business, and that's usually before the county administrators' report. I did wanna advise the board of the fact that Heather really did understate all the work and effort that it took for them to meet that compliance with the DEQ and the Chesapeake Bay Act. As you all fully aware, the Chesapeake, Chesapeake Bay Act is a, is a monster on land use, not only in King George County, but all localities affected by that legislation. And then, anything that DEQ touches, as we already know, is very complex and is very complicated, and it's definitely not a pleasant process. Heather specifically came and sat down with me and explained to me that last year, that they were gonna go through this compliance process, and when she detailed all the work and the whole effort that's gonna be required of the whole department to meet that compliance and meet DEQ demands, I did have those concerns if they would still be able to maintain their current workload while engaging with the regulatory agency. And so I'm very proud to know that they were able to successfully, not only meet their job, but also meet compliance with DEQ. And I just wanna state for the record that I appreciate all the hard work that that department is doing, the leadership of Brad and Heather to get them through this compliance process. And it's because of them that King George County is able to continue to perform its land use activities and keep our economic development initiative moving forward. So, thank you all, Community Development. With that being said, I spoke with the county attorney and expressed a concern for a lack of guaranteed continuity of operations in the event a significant portion of a department or a key employee fell ill or was injured. We then researched two firms that maintain an inventory of retired municipal employees that provide interim services to address the specific issue. After vetting both companies, we concluded that Burka Group to be the best fit to meet the county's needs. I have attached a proposed contract for your review. Please note that this instrument is not financially binding unless the firm is tapped by the county to fill a personnel need. When the county makes a request, fees and salaries are then negotiated with the company. The contract is termed through December 30, 2020. At this point, the county can then determine if our environment dictates a need to retain said services. I would like to recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to execute the enclosed contract subject to county attorney approval. And I just wanna stress that we really wanted to move forward with what we're calling a staff insurance policy. Ms. Kupka is absolutely right. Some of our staff, the majority of, the bulk of our staff doesn't live in King George County. They do live in our neighboring counties and in our neighboring counties who are seeing those upticks of the COVID-19 disease. And I do have great concerns that since we do not have a lot of redundancy or a back bench of staff in our county departments, all it takes is one key personnel, and that could bring the county to a screeching halt. For example, we only have one person that does payroll for teachers. That person's out due to COVID-19 or injury, then we're gonna have a real hard time trying to figure out how we're gonna get teachers paid. And that's a situation in many departments in King George County's administration. So, after expressing those, those concerns, we're back. We started a search to figure out how we can fill that gap and ensure that especially in the time of this local declaration and this pandemic, that we do have the insurance policy to ensure continuity of government. And I would highly recommend that the board consider this contract that authorized the county administrator and county attorney to execute it.
Do we need to make motions? Need to make motion for that? Right, do we have a motion?
Second.
Who would like to make the motion? Moved? It's all good. We have motion, properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays, chair votes aye. Got it. Thank you, Dr. Young. Mr. Britton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Young. Ms. Kupka?
Can I just say something right before I read the?
Yes, yes you can.
With regard to your report, Dr. Young, I just wanna make note for citizens that in addition to the directors' reports that have historically been in the board packet, I note the addition of a Parks and Recreation Director Report and an Economic Development Tourism Report. And I wanna thank you for that very much, Dr. Young. It's all in our efforts to be transparent to our citizens. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene enclosed meeting pursuant to State Code section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically the county's rights in its name, logo, and other intellectual property, responding to a local government impostor and disciplinary actions toward board members present and past. Invited to attend the closed meeting are the county administrator and county attorney because they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are in closed session.
Are we ready, guys?
All right.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening, the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
All right. Mr. Stonehill, do you certify? Ms. Koepka, do you certify?
So certify.
Mr. Bush, do you certify? Mr. Granger, do you certify?
So certify.
And this is Kathy Bender, and I so certify this meeting is called back into session. I will talk a little louder. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn until August 3rd at 6:30 in the -- Dr. Young, is it going to be here? The work session? Okay, in the auditorium.
I have King George Heights.
6:30, King George Heights School Auditorium.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye. This meeting is adjourned.